Good evening, everyone. I'm calling tonight's meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. And I've been instructed to remember to bang the gavel. Just before I call for the adoption of the agenda, I just wanted to note, you may see council is wearing jerseys tonight, and that is in support of Cochrane's entry into the Craft Hockeyville 2024 Contest. Cochrane is one of four remaining entries into Craft Hockeyville 2024 in the attempt to win $250,000 to our arena needs. And a huge shout out to SLS Centre who's been leading the charge on this, and it's been great driving around town, seeing all the different signs, and encouraging everyone to get ready to vote. So, you know, support our community in this. It's a great cause. If you haven't seen the signs, you can visit the SLS Centre website for instructions on how to vote. That is going to be March 29th and 30th. And you can vote as many times as you want to understand, so get your voting fingers ready to go. So, that's a shout out for that great initiative, and I thank everybody in Cochrane who's been supporting that to date. With that then, I am going to call for an adoption of the agenda as amended.
We'll move the agenda. Do we amend it, or as presented?
I think there was "as amended," correct? Yeah, there was a withdrawal from the initial presentation.
Great. I'll move as amended.
All in favor? That's passed unanimously. Excellent. Moving on to the adoption of the previous minutes, and we are looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of March 4th, Committee of the Whole. I do love our traditions. Thank you, Councillor Flowers.
I will move to adopt the minutes of March 4th, Calp meeting.
All in favor? And that is also passed unanimously. Thank you very much. So, moving ahead, enter our delegations tonight. We have two. The first is the Alberta Environment and Protected Areas Presentation, followed by Bike Cochrane. So with that then, we will call Alberta Environment to present, Mr. Darren Bourgede, hopefully I haven't messed it up too bad, Regulatory Assurance Manager, and Elise Chamberlain, Compliance Manager, to share their presentation with us tonight.
I can advance through. You're giving me a lot of credit. Thanks, folks. Can everyone hear me? I hope so. Awesome. And I could have wore a hockey sweater, for sure. Like, it's hurt my feelings now, because that's my normal attire, so...
We'll let you know next time.
I didn't get the memo, although I knew you were up for Hockeyville, so good luck.
Well, we'll forgive you if you make sure you vote for us 100 times on the 29th.
Vote early and vote often, I think that's what I heard. Perfect. So yeah, thank you very much for providing the opportunity for Elise and I to speak with the council here. Just as a bit of an introduction, Darren Bourgede, my normal day job, Regulatory Assurance Manager, based out of Calgary, looking after Calgary District, certainly have had interactions with your staff in the past. For the past, I guess maybe six months or so though, have been attached to our drought command and have been leading our drought command. And so I have both of those kind of portfolios, but primarily drought, and continue to be drought for the foreseeable future, based on some of the things we're seeing. This particular presentation is a bit of an average one, and folks may have seen some of this material before. This is more, it is the latest and updated bit of information and presentation material. We've been giving this to, gosh, I think we probably spoke to over 75 different groups since October. Numerous municipalities, obviously, about 50 probably in total. Industry sector, agricultural sector, irrigation districts. Basically trying to reach out and give the message to as many folks as we can with respect to what we think might be coming. So yeah, it's been an ongoing kind of communication exercise that we will be certainly continuing with. Now Drew, we'll enter, advance the slides. Perfect. Good. Awesome. Thanks so much. Just quickly run through sort of the items that you see here on the, you know, in terms of the agenda, giving you folks just where we are currently, what we've developed in terms of our drought command work, our 2024 emergency plan, the water sharing agreements. And you may be familiar with some of that terminology. We've been entering into an exercise with some of the larger licensees, so I'll speak to them in a little bit here in here. Quickly about drought response timelines, what we're thinking we're going to see, and, you know, certainly time for Q&amp;A if you guys would like to ask, you know, certain questions. So, I mean, current status. I think just, you know, as an introductory kind of component to this, El Nino is one of the things that we were kind of tracking very seriously, and it certainly is still prevalent with respect to the climatic conditions associated with El Nino. Typically, what you see in El Nino for our particular province is certainly warmer summers, warmer winters, and lower precipitation, especially in the east slopes, where we need and generate most of our runoff for, you know, the needs that we have. Now, having said that, apparently, we're going to get some snow this week. And so, the little happy dance that we've been doing, and it kind of highlights, I think, for us, the challenge in terms of, you know, long-term modeling, things like El Nino, and forecasting. And forecasters have been kind of challenging me this for the last three or four months, is I can't really say, you know, predictably what's going to happen more than about a week in advance. And that's just the nature of weather forecasting to some extent. So, we are certainly seeing, hopefully, some more precipitation. But as you'll see, there's a number of challenges that we were already, like, experiencing that I think is going to make the precipitation helpful, but not the only thing that can get us through this. So, and this is, there's all kinds of different kind of measurements that we've been doing here. Our winter flow measurement exercise, we've been doing that pretty aggressively over the last, well, three or four months. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, we are seeing certainly, you know, historically low values in our rivers. And the point that I've been trying to make for some folks is, you know, certainly, I think in the, what we call the SSRB, the Saskatchewan River Basin, you know, some of this isn't necessarily a surprise. We've seen things like this in the past, and we've experienced some of it. You know, this is a heavily managed system, and it has, you know, some lower values. The concern, I think, that we really see now is, this has become provincial in scale and scope. Things like the Athabasca River being the lowest on record, North Saskatchewan being very, very low on record. We did see some of that in the Peace River as well. So, the places in the province where we typically haven't experienced significant drought before. And I guess the key to that is, this is, I think, what we would view as, this is a drought emergency at a provincial scale, not at a regional scale. So, you know, that's something that is quite different from us, you know, what we would normally see. Some of our, I mean, this is one that I've talked about a few different times at a few different presentations. You can see the St. Mary's Reservoir, here's a picture over here. The Old Man Reservoir is at 31%, and you can see normally what it should be at this, in that range of, you know, essentially double that. The real concern there is, is we would expect it to be, after spring fresh out, to be in the 80% full area, and we're thinking it's going to be more in the 40% full. And it's those types of things that are super concerning to us in terms of, not just potentially lower snow, which we are seeing across the east slopes, notwithstanding what's going to happen this week, but lower snow, already depleted reservoirs from last year, which was a dry year as well, and also the expectation that we're not going to really be able to fill up those reservoirs. So it's almost a bit of that perfect storm with respect to drought conditions, especially, I would suggest, in the Old Man Basin. That's the real concern for us, but we're certainly leaning in all across the SSRB, which includes the Red Deer, the Bow, and the Old Man. Just with respect to some of the snow, we've been certainly heavily engaged in doing our snow survey work. We've been doing that since really, the 1st of January is where it has value, and really going out to all of the sites that we would typically go to. And you can see here, we're, for the most part, especially in the Bow and the Old Man, we're quite a bit below what our average values would be. So we continue with that snow survey work, and that's really the, our helicopter flights out to certain sites where we do snow depth and snow-water equivalent measurements. That'll continue, in addition to, and I'm not sure if folks are familiar with our Rivers app, but the Rivers app also, you can see our snow pillows. Those are more like the ongoing, continuous monitoring of snow. And I think what we see essentially is that they're all, and it's changed here in the last little bit, which is, you know, gratifying to some extent, but what we were observing is, most of the snow pillows were, and we have an upper or lower quartile with respect to what we would normally see. We were typically below the lower quartile, so really, really, really indicative of low snow in the east slopes, and I'm sure you folks know that's where we drive our water. That's what, you know, what drives our recharge for the Bow and the Old Man and the Red Deer River. So, you know, just ongoing work. The other part I'd like to just highlight is that we've started enhancing some of our snow survey work. We're doing now LiDAR flights over the east slopes to give us a better spatial understanding of the snow and a qualitative kind of understanding of the snow-water equivalent. So, really, I guess, leaning in on some of the additional monitoring, we think is all going to be super helpful in terms of predicting what's going to be coming our way. So yeah, that's ongoing and giving us some really good information so far. This one is, I think, it hasn't really changed too, too much, but it's the latest information from the Canadian Drought Monitor, just like, you know, indicating what they're seeing from a soil moisture perspective, especially if you focus on the province. You can see the areas where they're predicting potentially some exceptional or extreme drought conditions. That hasn't changed very much, I guess, the last two or three that I've looked at. So, they've all had a kind of similar look to that. I think the part that I'd like, I mean, I don't think this is surprising to folks. You can drive around and kind of see what's dry and how dry it is. But one of the things that, I guess, goes hand in hand with this is certainly our drought code for fire, forest fires this year. Our drought code is exceptionally high this year. They measure it based on combustible material and dryness with respect to that. And especially in that northeast part of the province, as represented on this particular part, or northwest, I should say, the northwest part of the province is represented on this map. They're definitely concerned with it. They're, to give you an example of what that even looks like on a ground level, you know, they measure the ability to fight fires by can they access what they call skimble lakes, lakes that they can fly over and scoop water up, obviously, to fight fires. We're seeing lakes in the northwest part of the province that they totally normally access that are completely dry right now. So they're not just worried about the combustible material, but the ability to fight fires with respect to that. So just, you know, I think what we have is just a broad-scale sort of drought component. Now, we're worried about it from a water management perspective. The egg sector's worried about it from the soil moisture perspective, and our forestry group is worried about it from a forest fire perspective. But you could see, it's all, it's all in a way combined to give us, you know, significant concerns. I had mentioned we've moved into sort of a drought command structure, and essentially, it's built on an incident command system. It looks like what you would see from an emergency perspective. We've designed it that way on purpose. It isn't exactly an ICS model, but you'll see here, it kind of mirrors that to a large extent. Just to focus on some of the work that's been going on. On the right-hand side, you can see the planning and coordination teams. That's looking at our entire system and how we manage water and how we need to manage water in emergency. So, looking at enhancing our monitoring, certainly enhancing our modeling, looking at low-flow water quality, so making sure that we can adapt to low waters in receiving water, low water and receiving water body, let the need for municipalities, say for example, to discharge into those water struts, and making sure that we've identified the high-risk facilities and identified mitigation strategies to adapt to what we may see. That'll probably be later in the year, later in the summer. We have typically seen that before, but it's one of the things we're really looking at. I'll explain in a couple of subsequent slides the regulatory tools and the emergency declaration work that we've built into our emergency plan. Certainly looked at our apportionment piece, I'm not sure if you folks are aware, but we certainly have commitments to the provinces of Manitoba and Saskatchewan with respect to how much water we are obligated to send them. And so we've really been looking at the, tweaking that system to make sure that we're keeping as much water as we're entitled to, but still giving the other provinces exactly what their master agreement and apportionment kind of allows them to get to. I had mentioned operational preparedness, that's in our ER plan. The water sharing agreement, I'll speak to a little bit too as well. Building a variety of different electronic tools, both internal and external, just so folks have all the information they need with respect to drought. And then the regulatory tools, enhancing our regulatory tools. And one of the things that I'll highlight for folks on that is that we're trying to create expedited processes if we need to lean in on sort of a regulatory approach to issue some sort of authorization for people to get water in an expedited fashion. And what I've been, I think, suggesting there for the most part is quite a few of us built similar processes in 2013 to get people the regulatory tools they needed for flood recovery. So we've lived that world, and we kind of know what it looks like, and we're doing something similar for drought response this year as well. The response section, Elise is here joining me, she's leading that Bow Basin team. That's our tactical team, that's our operational team. So once this moves into an operational phase, which will be fairly soon, I would suggest, we have these teams now established with groups underneath them looking at approvals, compliance, emergency response, monitoring, the fisheries component, linking with our other sectors that are critical, forestry, oiling, gas, egg, all of those things. So that's all embedded in our coordination team on the response side. Do you want to do Q&amp;A at the end? Am I totally depressing?
Yes.
No. Yes. No. What can I do? Now, when I did this on Friday, the fire guy went before me, so I actually sounded pretty promising, but, yeah, not so much today. I had mentioned our plan, certainly, you know, the plan, just to kind of summarize in a way, and I've got another slide that speaks to it certainly, but, you know, it looks at our entire management system. How do we manage water and all of the components associated with that? And as I'm sure you guys appreciate, it's a complex system, and it's complex in that it's designed on some historical paradigms, things like first-in-time, first-in-right, and the priority system. And, you know, we don't think that those are necessarily aligned with how we need to manage a drought emergency, so really looking at some of the kind of variances with respect to that. Really, we wanted to get into roles and responsibility, who does what, not just with ourselves, but certainly with municipal affairs and the AER, other regulators that are involved, making sure that we have full alignment with respect to that. And absolutely, it's critical that we speak with license holders such as yourselves, both at the municipal level, industrial and agricultural sector. And that's really a key component of the work we're doing. Excuse me. Here's some objectives, I think, you know, at a higher level. You can kind of see them there, but really, I mean, what we want to kind of highlight is, you know, how do we monitor? How do we forecast in a drought situation? And, you know, the protection of human health and safety is first and foremost for us. And that's one of the things that we want to articulate in the plan. I guess we wanted also to recognize within our plan that any and all considerations are relevant in terms of the discussion we want to have with respect to, you know, trying to minimize the potential impacts associated with the drought. Leveraging relationships. And you'll see a little bit of that as we talk about the sharing agreements, but I think we're all in this together. And I think it's critical that we all look at this as not just one entity managing. I think we're all going to be tagged and tasked with doing certain things, and it's, you know, those types of things we want to talk about effectively. Really increasing situational awareness. Now, I think, you know, I've been asking other councils that I've been speaking to, but, you know, I think that the meetings such as this and the ability to speak to folks like yourselves at a variety of different levels has been super helpful in increasing the situational awareness. I don't think, I mean, I think everyone is aware now, you know, this is significant and serious. And I don't think that I've run into anybody that's pushed back on that concept. And so, I think partly that's really in rewarding our communication teams in as much work as they've been doing. And just on that end, I mean, we're going to engage in a significantly large advertising campaign coming up here, that's really going to get into this from a public perspective. I think the more we can talk to folks, the more we can kind of communicate with them in a variety of different ways, the more value we'll have in terms of managing this. The other component of this is just, and this is kind of the stages that we've envisioned with respect to our plan, and you can see, you know, the different, you know, active stages. Just as an FYI, we're in what we would consider to be stage four right now. And stage four is really, if you go to, again, that Rivers app, you can see that we're, we currently have about 51 water management advisories throughout the province. That will change somewhat, once we start getting some fresh out, once you start getting some water in the system. I don't know to what extent and to what degree yet, but we think stage four is appropriate for us to kind of lean in on this very aggressively. Stage five, you can see, we've identified as, you know, significant emergency measures needed to protect human health and safety. The one part I just highlight there is that we certainly have a legislative tool within the Water Act, and I'll speak to it here on a subsequent slide, but related to emergency declaration for water management. I think our thought with respect to this is, that partly could be what we see, but we do also, you know, see states of local emergency, the provincial emergency center being stood up, you know, significant kind of issues. Now, I can't paint all of the triggers that, I think this is one of those, we're going to know it when we see it sort of thing. And certainly, we have tools that would help respond to this, but we wouldn't be, I don't think, doing this in isolation of municipal affairs and emergency management Alberta, and Alberta Health, and the AER, and just about everybody else that might be involved or linked in. Just some of the things that we've built, and as I mentioned, looking at the non-regulatory, so certainly outreach like this, continued education initiatives, the advertising that we want to do certainly. Conservation measures, we've been asking really all municipalities that I've met with here to make sure they have developed, reviewed, look at, and I think most of them have either a water shortage plan, which is sometimes it's empowered through the Water Act, or a drought response plan, which might be more related to their municipal activities, but really making sure that they've updated that, that they're ready to respond to it, and that they're ready to implement it. And I think what you'd like to, we're going to really be asking everybody at the municipal level to conserve water this year, voluntarily for the most part, but really implementing their plan. And, I mean, some of our learning has come from your emergency from last year. You know, what we saw there was, and what I've, you know, what I've heard is that, you know, we did see certainly a drought emergency in Cochrane, or a water emergency in Cochrane, sorry, and also some high water usage during a water shortage kind of scenario. Want to try to avoid that. I don't want people to start hoarding water. It's not effective, and it doesn't help anybody, but it just seems to be a natural reaction. So we want to really make sure that we're socializing this at a public level so that people aren't thinking that way. Need to think broader than that, for sure. As I said, I have a couple more slides that talk about the water sharing agreements. That's really been the critical work that we've been doing for the last month or so, engaged in those water sharing agreements, and really coming up with some really interesting and unique approaches to water shortages. This is sort of the things we're looking at from a regulatory perspective. And I think if you think about those authorizations, each one of those particular tools, if we use, if we employ them, we want to make sure that they're done in an expedited fashion, that we can get the regulatory pieces to folks as quickly as we possibly can. So we don't want to get hung up by red tape on these things, and so that's really been a focus for our team. Certainly the compliance piece, I mentioned first-in-time, first-in-right, the fit-for component. We may have to administer priority if somebody calls priority. That's a challenge. That's a challenge for us in a drought. Because it doesn't think about the important uses of water. It only says, "I have priority, and I'm entitled to the water before anybody else is." We're hopeful to not have to use that, and we're hopeful nobody calls priority, because as I said, I just don't think it'll work. I can't see it working. And, I mean, from a municipal perspective, for the most part, all of those senior licenses, they're really related to, for the most part, agricultural sector, irrigation districts. None of them are at the municipal level. They're all junior licenses. And so if I say, "Public health and safety is my first and foremost concern", and somebody calls priority, those two things are misaligned to some extent. And so, that's something we don't really want to pay attention to. It says enforcement and environmental orders here, essentially water management orders. On a surgical level in a particular place, we may have to consider doing WMOs. In some cases, there might be friendly WMOs, water management orders, that kind of control and limit the way some people are accessing and getting water. There's a real reason why we might have to do them, and it might be termed a friendly order. It's to enable certain actions that aren't part of their normal operating parameters. And so, those ones, I think, are something that we've certainly looked at and will be developing as well. And then, I have a slide that speaks to the declaration of emergency a little bit more detail, but that's that Section 107 piece that I mentioned. Couple of things on the 107. So, we've never done it before. So it's never been used before. The enabling of the 107 is a declaration that Lieutenant Governor and Council. And so it's essentially a cabinet decision. So as I'm sure you folks can imagine, having never done it before, we had to develop briefing material that could help our political leaders understand just how this might work. And so that's some of the work that we're doing right now. Cabinet has been briefed on this. We've articulated the triggers associated with this, both at, you know, what we might see from an environmental perspective and really what we might see from a regulatory perspective. Our system has an inability, or might have an inability, to do the things we needed to do. We might have to consider doing a 107. It does look at it in a couple of different ways. It does suggest it could be a provincial emergency, or it could be more strategic and surgical than that. So there's a spatial component that I think we wanted, definitely to make sure Cabinet understood. Certainly talks about the potential for compensation to be paid to people that are impacted by the 107. It doesn't guarantee compensation. It just suggests that Cabinet will consider compensation. I'm not sure what they'll do with that at this point in time. We recommended a certain course of action there, but again, it is political in some regards, so we'll wait and see what they do with that. And then, as I mentioned, the geographic extent of where it might be utilized. And so, that is a cabinet package that's with them right now. I would expect to see and hear a public release on this, probably within the next two weeks. And so folks will get a sense of just what this looks like at a, you know, in a spatial scale. So yeah, really, a lot of work. And as I said, the challenge there is a tool, regulatory tool, that I've never used before. And I certainly, won't be a surprise for you, I have an opinion about how this should work, but hopefully they won't ask me. The next few slides are just essentially the water sharing pieces. And just to highlight, we developed for the SSRB four basin tables, the Red Deer, the Bow, and the upper and lower Old Man Basins. And we've engaged Watersmart, and I think, you know, certainly Drew, you guys know Watersmart. And we've engaged Watersmart to use the Saskatchewan River Operational Model, TROM, to kind of go through scenarios with those basin leads. And I've got a slide here, you'll see who's on that. But essentially, for the Bow and Old Man, we targeted the 90% of the license allocations. And we came up with a list of who that is, with the hope of developing sharing agreements so that those large licensees would be able to work with some of the smaller licensees to come up with mechanisms to share water. Those sessions have been really, really good, very collaborative. We have now drafted, we've had three meetings, you know, it says February, March. We completed our last meeting, I think, middle of last week, and have now drafted the, what we call the Memorandums of Understanding for Sharing Water. We have those all now drafted and ready for sign-off, which I would hope to think we're going to get here. I think we've lengthened the wheelbase, probably early April for sign-off. In some basins, there are going to be less of a challenge than others. And, I mean, just to give you context on that, I think the Bow Basins, I think the basins that have sort of already been heavily regulated to some extent, that managed through our dam operations and our water operations folks, they are a little more, I guess, socialized with respect to things like sharing water and managing water. I would certainly say the Red Deer Basin doesn't have that same sort of expertise, just because of experience or anything else. So, there's been different levels of understanding of how to manage water and how we want to manage water, but we're striving towards a unified front here. I would think we're going to get these, like I said here, by the end of the month, for sure. And really, really good work. I think I mentioned this, but I, you know, essentially, um, what we did was we put in, into the TROM model, two thousand and one information. Two thousand and one for folks that are old like me was a very dry year, uh, significantly dry year. And we thought that was a good way to kind of model what might happen. So we've put a baseline of two thousand and one into TROM and then we put last year's water use into that. And then started looking at what the impacts of that would be if we see two thousand and one and we see water use like we saw last year. One of the ramifications of that, allowing the licensees then to reduce the amount of water they take. So that we can, uh, protect the aquatic environment, get water to some of those other water licensees, as I mentioned. Meet our apportionment, uh, agreements and commitments and keep water in our reservoirs. Some of the models that we were looking at, if we use water based on O one, if we use water like we did last year, the Old Man won't be at thirty percent, the Old Man will be at zero percent and the Dixon Dam will be at zero percent. So we need to mitigate against that obviously too. We need to create storage. We need to create that ability to store water as well. So that's really what these things have been incredibly useful for demonstrating how we need to, for lack of a better word, tweak the system. Just quickly on the, you know, I think I've articulated already what this looks like. Three meetings, uh, we are now, as I said, water sharing agreements implemented as needed at the bottom slide. We have those draft agreements. We're hopefully going to get them signed off here. And really what they're going to be is they're going to be in our, they're going to be in our box of tools. And if we see conditions, uh, come the way we, uh, hopefully don't, but they may. If we see those conditions, we'll be able to execute those agreements in a very flexible manner. So, uh, yeah, a, a super powerful tool with respect to what we want to do. Oh, and here's, sorry, as I mentioned, here's the, uh, the folks that are sort of at the table. You can see basically who's in and who's not in. The Red Deer Basin, because it's not as regulated from a, like irrigation districts hold so much water in the, in the Bow and the Old Man, that it's easy to get a, a pretty tight group that gets us that ninety percent of licensees. The Bow doesn't have that same, it's not managed in the same way. And so the, the list of licensees, first off, if we use ninety percent, I would have had a hundred and fifty people at the table. So we dropped that to seventy percent and even then you can see just it's a, it's a bigger group. And it's a different kind of group in some respects. You won't see irrigation districts in Red Deer. But the, 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 what we are confident of is we've got, uh, collaboration and agreement with respect to what the agreements need to do. The other thing I should highlight, and I think it was on one of the other slides, but that we certainly had First Nations, uh, engagement at the water sharing agreement meetings that we had. So we had these people actively involved, but we had NGOs, we had, uh, other municipalities involved. We had a variety of the people there as observers and providing advice. And so that's all been incredibly valuable, uh, to us to build the agreements as well. Quickly throughout response timeline, um, you can see where we are February and March finalizing those agreements. Continuing with that, the, the monitoring work we're doing, we'll be leaning in aggressively and hard on the, once the rivers start flowing, getting the flow measurements going. We're really enhancing a lot of our monitoring work this year, just to give us as much information as possible. Not just to make real time decisions, but also to inform the modeling and forecasting that is critical to, uh, to drought preparedness. And so there's going to be a lot of work in there. The last two, the May and June pieces, uh, I wouldn't, I mean, we wanted to put that on a time scale, but I don't think necessarily May is the one oh seven trigger. One oh seven is a tool, as I mentioned, it's a tool we may have to use. I'm not sure it'll be in May. I'm not sure when it'll be. But we just kind of represented that. And then June, you know, if we get, you know, the perfect storm of, of, of drought type conditions, we think it would probably be about around June, might be later, might be earlier. But just wanted to kind of highlight that this is some of the thing. But while all of that's going on, as I mentioned, you know, really, really leaning in on our emergency plan, really, really leaning in on our, our drought and water management activities, leaning in on all of our, uh, modeling and monitoring work. Doing as much of that preparation and getting prepared for what we need to. And there's a huge team doing this and a huge amount of resources from the provincial government being applied to this across, not just across our ministry, but in our ministry, but it's outside of our ministry as well. Last slide. I'm not sure how much time I have, Drew, that I, I could just keep talking. Perfect. We've shown this, this slide a couple of different times. It's the Old Man Reservoir and it kind of demonstrates just what, you know, thirty percent full looks like. I, you know, it's, it's, uh, dry to a significant concern level. I'm sure you guys can appreciate that. There's, we have had a number of pictures here. We have people going out here all the time. Social media is ripe with this in terms of, uh, archaeological folks finding dinosaur bones, they're happy. Paleontology stuff, yeah, they're great. They're, you know, it's, it's great for them. Uh, teepee rings that were underwater, you know, becoming, you know, important artifacts. So those, those are the positives, but the negatives are, I mean, you can see, and I'm sure most folks know, reservoirs are very much a V construction. So you could fly over this and not realize just how much capacity is lost at the top of this reservoir. How much capacity is just not there. And really, I'm not sure what it would take for us to get this thing to even what we need at a manageable level. If we're talking, it should be seventy or eighty percent full after spring fresh out. Our, our team doesn't think we're going to get anywhere near that. Now, we're meeting our in-stream flows. We're, we're, it basically it's water in, water out right now from the reservoir. So the aquatic environment is protected. We're still releasing water as we're, as we're licensed to. But that's all we're doing. We're just kind of basically holding our own with respect to this. That will improve. I guarantee it will improve. It'll improve after this week's snow. Now, I'm not sure. Seems like Bow is kind of the target more than the Old Man, unfortunately. Old Man's where we really need it, but, knock wood. I have said in every meeting, and I have been roasted on this a couple of times, um, I'm absolutely hoping for rain. That's not all we're doing, but I'm absolutely hoping for rain. People are saying, well, the province is just hoping. Well, we're doing a lot more than hoping, as I'm sure that this presentation highlights. But you can't tell me not to hope for rain and I'm absolutely. And so when somebody said this week, oh crap, it's going to snow, I mean, for me, the, like, great. I hope it snows for a month. Now, I'm going to make a lot of people angry, but my concern level is though at this point in time. I'm not sure. Do you want to do Q and A? Sure.
Excellent. Um, yes, Mr. Borje, thank you very much for your presentation. I think my council colleagues probably have more than a couple of questions lined up for you. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Councilor Reed.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Does the drought modeling take into account the kind of other half of this significant concern? And that is that warmer springs and summers we're having? Does that, does the modeling, is the modeling just about drought? Or is it, is the other half of that equation taken into account?
So I, I'm going to have to explore where you're, what you're thinking of. So mean in terms of historically what we saw or what we think we might see?
What you might be seeing.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's looking at everything. Looks at pre-sip models, looks at everything that we might see with respect to, uh, soil moisture, precipitation, east slope, flow. It combines all of that into one kind of comprehensive model that gives us a, a bit, a bit of a chance to predict what we might encounter.
And while I appreciate that it's a provincial concern and all of us have our part to play, my understanding is that the largest license users are agriculture and industry. Is that, is that the case?
I would say really it's agriculture. It's irrigation.
Just agriculture. Okay.
I mean, they hold the vast majority of the water in the province.
So municipalities that are, are small players, are small users and all of that?
Yeah, you bet. And, sorry.
I was going to, like, the, where I was going with that question was-
Return flow component to how you use water anyway, right? I mean, there's, uh, eighty percent of your water goes back into the system.
Right. So if, if we were in a position where we had to, uh, move to phase five, those emergency measures, and recognizing if, as you said, that I, I understood the mission and mandate is to protect the welfare of Albertans. Then it would probably be agriculture that would first see those emergency measures come into effect?
I would, I would think so. Since they're the, they're the largest licensees, they hold the verat, the majority of the water. If we need to distribute that, and really we came up and, I'll, I'll give you the kind of scenario of the triggers that we painted for Cabinet. Certainly human health and safety, including fire suppression, including power. You know, the things that you got to keep the lights on in the hospital. So some nuances that, you know, at first we were just talking about potable water systems. We had to broaden that out for human health and safety. Livestock welfare, I think, is pretty important too, and I think we've highlighted that for folks. So the agricultural piece, like, and we've talked to them enough, uh, they have dry years. They're unable to water crops. Crops die. You know, that, that's something we've experienced before. And so at a provincial scale, I think that's where we'd be looking for the water for sure. They have the water and they have the ability to cut back and redistribute the water we need to.
Right, yeah. And you answered two of my other questions, or one of the other questions, and that was that there's a much greater infrastructure associated with water than just, uh, just water to drink, right? She talked about power dams and so on.
Absolutely.
The last question I had if I could was, uh, what percentage is Ghost Lake Reservoir at right now?
Ghost is not too, too bad. Like it's a, it's seventy percent full. So the, uh, the, the, the trans Zelta component, now we certainly, at least you can correct me if I'm wrong, police looks after this. But I think we are seeing some of lower values in the upper K. But as far as the, uh, the Ghost and Bear Spa, uh, they're all okay right now, to be very honest. So, you know, we're, we're concerned, but not as concerned as we are with respect to the, uh, to the Old Man for sure.
A wonderful question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I know I was going to keep it short, Jeff. What, what can we do aside from being aware of this? What, you talked about, uh, municipality having an emergency, what did you call it, emergency, oh, misspelled? Water shortage plan. Is, beyond that, is there, what else could we be doing?
So I don't, Drew, you guys have a water shortage plan, I presume, right? I don't know if it's a drought plan or one time, anyway, so. You absolutely, and I know that Drew's team are already well on top of this, looking at those triggers, looking at where we are. But I would suggest, uh, prepare right now for implementing conservation measures. The voluntary ones, you know, to, like what we saw with the city of Calgary last year. And so, uh, we didn't, I guess one of the challenges that I've been running into, excuse me, in discussions with other municipalities in, in the SSRB is that not everyone did things in a similar way. And, uh, we'd look, we'd like to try to achieve more consistency at the municipal level with respect to conservation and asking people to conserve water. I don't think there's any reason we can't do that, but it was interesting when I spoke to the, uh, city of Red Deer. This was in December, I think, and we asked, hey, did you guys put conservation measures on? They said they didn't, for whatever reason, and, and there was no real driver for it. They said, interestingly enough, since most of the people in Red Deer actually get Calgary TV, people voluntarily conserve. They actually saw a drop of water, a drop in water use, not from their own actions, but from the actions of the city of Calgary. I would suggest the city's measures were, uh, were appropriate and were ones that I think we want to try to mirror as much as possible. So I think it's never too early to get into discussions with your stakeholders with respect to the potential of this coming. I think you need to be prepared and folks need to. It's part of the, coming, the advertising that we want to do, the communication we want to do, the message we sent licensees, a couple of different letter at the ministerial level to talk about conservation. I think we need to really encourage that in a number of different levels, including certainly at your level as well. So conserve and maybe implement, you know, think about, you may be already, your triggers to do conservation. It doesn't hurt.
I think our community does a good job, but we could always do better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Janam?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Um, had the opportunity to see you at CMRV as well, so glad to see you.
You saw all this already.
Yeah, well, no, it's, uh, you said it's the, the updated version. And, uh, one thing I wanted to highlight that Councilor Reed did too is, and you s- you spoke to right at the end is that Alberta Environment's doing more than just hoping. So, uh, it's evident in your, in your slide deck today. And, um, tongue in cheek, I officially heard today from an Alberta Environment, the next week's weather is a complete gas. Right? So, um, uh, come on, that was a joke. Um, so my, now my-
There's nothing funny about this.
Well, I'm going to stop looking ahead at the forecast from now on. Mike, I've got three questions. One is, um, around long term and this may be, I mean, focused on the task at hand, but, what is your department looking long term? I mean, we can look south to California. They've been struggling with drought for decades. Is this a long-term problem we're going to see in Alberta? Uh, and it's kind of segueing back to my joke about the weather, but, uh, can you speak about what it is that you're doing long term?
I would say, uh, for folks that are interested, Minister does have a mandate letter out right now with respect to, uh, water and the need to kind of conserve and store water as much as possible. So that longer term piece, Mayor, I think is, is certainly, uh, something that our, our department and Minister are paying attention to. As I'm sure you guys appreciate, like, I'm, I'm focused at the acute level right now, but, but, you know, not those longer term kind of goals. But we have a number of people looking at the initiatives that, that Minister wants to employ. Certainly looking at storage, looking at increasing our ability to store more water. Looking at our management systems associated with that. Looking at how we, uh, monitor water, how we, uh, how we actually do predictive modeling with it. And looking at our policies associated with water. So all of those things seem to fall into that, trying to recognize that you're right. This is something, this is, okay, hold on here. I think we've recognized this in the southern part of the province for quite some time. We've recognized the seriousness and significance of water. We closed the basin because of it. The basin's been closed for over ten years. And I think people here get it and get why. I think now what's become apparent is, is now this becomes more of a provincial scale concern. I think the target is still us, but now that it's got that provincial lens on it, I think you're going to see, and I hopeful that you're going to see some real, aggressive kind of moves towards, uh, doing the things on a longer term basis that you are alluding to to some extent.
Yeah, thank you for that. And maybe you can't answer this if it's outside your purview, but does that include, uh, maybe a date that you can announce when the Bow River Reservoir Project might be announced?
Nope.
I was expecting that.
I'll say this, I know they're looking at it.
Yeah.
They're absolutely looking at it and they're looking at it aggressively. But as far as you can appreciate, the First Nations component and that associated with it as well, there's a, it's complicated. What I will say is this, I don't know how many folks would have experienced the EIA process we went through for this spring bank dam, for the, the challenges that went with that. We definitely don't want to be, we, we recognize that most of these reservoirs will require an EIA. But we are looking at mechanisms to at least streamline that EIA process, make it still as meaningful as possible. But that was, that took way too long, in my opinion. So, yeah, but bro, it's coming.
Yeah. Okay, last question, and again, it might be outside your, your, uh,
I'll probably say something anyway, you know that.
Non-potable, um, the legislation around, uh, like purple pipe and non-potable water use. And we can, now I'm looking at Australia as the, the leader in that. Is the province looking at, like, changing legislation to allow us to irrigate, use non-potable water?
Yeah, both in the short and in the longer term. So as I mentioned, the water mandate is, is asking for what policy changes might be effective with respect to water management and getting more water into people's hands. So that's certainly there. But even in the short term, we're thinking about, um, as an example, and I don't, and this isn't a guarantee, but I'll give you an example of things we're looking at. There's currently a sixty-two fifty exemption for stormwater right now. We're looking at bumping that up, coming up with a bigger number, just to give people that flexibility on how they need to use and, and not use that water. So there's a variety of things that we're looking at, broadening our exemptions with respect to dugouts, uh, giving the people to, the ability to build appropriate dugouts without needing to go through an approval process. So that's, you know, there's, it's a twelve fifty number now. We maybe need to bump that up. So looking at all of that stuff, both short and longer term. I think the longer term pieces of that are more tied to the water mandate and the policy pieces that were leading into, uh, and, and just as an aside too. Minister has now a water advisory committee that's been struck. I'm not sure if you folks are aware of that or not. And, uh, you are, I think, ably represented by somebody from the CMRV. Mayor Volkitol, Mayor Thorne is on that committee. And so I think she's, if you know Mayor Thorne, she's got awesome ideas and, and very, uh, able to effectively articulate those ideas. And so I'm sure Minister's hearing about those.
Yep, thank you. Uh, last is just to comment, um, you suggested that the power of, uh, working together regionally. Just to give you a heads up that, uh, the Calgary Metropolitan Region, we have been discussing drought for quite some time. That's where I saw your presentation last, but we're also looking to align our efforts, uh, through the CMRV around messaging. Maybe it's even water conservation measures that we share as a region, which is, uh, we have not done that.
That's perfect. Uh, CMRV has been at our water sharing table. Jamie's been there, Jamie. So if you know Jamie. And I think we have a meeting on CMRV that I'm invited to on Thursday, probably to get yelled at, most likely.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I don't see that, uh, my colleagues have questions, so I'll jump in with a couple. And thank you very much for your presentation. Um, and your presentation I found, of course, was, uh, the provincial wide impact. We're seeing a, a province-wide, uh, drought. And if you look at the map, it's pretty much all of Western Canada. And so we're looking ahead at dealing with a drought on a province-wide level. And then paired with that also, uh, you know, fire impacts, um, that have to be planned out for as well. So, so lots on the plate to deal with. Um, but bringing it back to the, the local level, I mean, Cochrane gets, we're part of the South Saskatchewan River- we're part of the South Saskatchewan River Basin, and we get our water from the Bow River, which comes right off, you know, through the glaciers and the tributaries and all those great things. And you did mention that the uh, the Ghost Dam, that reservoir is at seventy to eighty percent. Um, and the Bear's Paw Dam is also kind of in that number. So I was just trying to get a take on your, the the context in the for the Cochrane story. So my take on it right now is, yes, it's it's lower, but um, it's obviously not in the the red alarm status as the Old Man Basin is. Um, and in the the Cochrane context, again, our municipality uses a very small amount of that draw available, and then I think we return, I remember our last presentation, in excess of ninety percent back to it. Um, so Cochrane's ability, our residents' ability to make a difference is to, you know, lean into it with our conservation measures, and we had a great presentation a few weeks ago on Cochrane status for that. But so I think my big question on that is, if you just wanted to maybe summarize again, what's the the Cochrane story? What do we need to look out for? And then if you could answer, what situation would we need to be in before Cochrane wouldn't be able to draw our full allocation from the Bow River?
Yeah, so uh, again, it's a bit of a simple kind of answer with respect to conservation, but I'm not sure what else you can really do other than, you know, what we had heard was there's, for example, uh, more, uh, less voluntary conservation measures that might be employed if you ran into sort of significant water shortages. And, you know, this is what we had heard from different municipalities is that's basically at the curb stop. That's at, you know, monitoring people's water use right at their homes, basically. Uh, in our water sharing discussions, municipalities have been identifying the challenge of doing that. And so from a municipal perspective, we're hoping that conservation measures will get us a a five to fifteen percent reduction of water. That's what we've seen from people that have done it historically. And so that's meaningful and effective. Uh, anything that would go beyond that would be uh, very much more aggressive with respect to what a municipality needs to do, but certainly that for sure. So voluntary conservation measures, watering restrictions where appropriate, the watering cycle where, you know, you're on and off depending on your house number, those types of things are pretty straightforward. Um, sorry, so the second part of your question was?
Based around, what would the situation have to be before Cochrane wouldn't be able to draw our full allocation?
Um, so the 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 licensing process right now, and I'm, you know, I know that, you know, we've been working closely with you folks in terms of facilitating and transfer, those types of things. Some of your licenses are encumbered by uh, a condition tied to in-stream objectives, water conservation objectives, but not all of them. And so really, the uh, the licenses that aren't encumbered, you're, as long as you can remove water from the system, you have the ability to access that water. So there's probably gonna be very few times during the course of the year where you wouldn't actually be able to use one of your licenses that's not encumbered. Drew and I have talked about that a few different times, and we think that we've modeled and created the system for you to do that. So that's, you know, just the black and white, kind of, here's the paper, you can take water. Um, I don't know, I mean, to put it honestly, uh, Mayor, Mayor, I'm not sure if I had it in the presentation I gave to the basin council, but one of our, one of our municipalities in the Old Man and dam in the reservoir right now, uh, that's the MD of Pincher Creek, their intakes are out of water, they're out of the water. And I guess to answer your question, Deputy Mayor, is that, that's what we would, I mean, for some of your licenses that aren't encumbered, there might be a point in time where the river's too low for you to actually get water. Hopefully, we don't run into that. Uh, you can imagine, as dry as it is in the Old Man Reservoir, uh, the MD of Pincher Creek never expected their intakes to be high and dry, and never expected to have to spend over one point five million dollars hauling water uh, from the forbey of the dam to their reservoirs to kind of mitigate those impacts. So tangibly, infrastructure impacts for sure would be the the thing that would really limit, really any municipality. What I would say is this, is that before we would ever get into some uh egregious uh, response with respect to any municipality, we would be leaning in hard as a regulator to try to find ways for you to get water, to try to mitigate the impacts. And I have a number of examples that we ran into at a smaller scale last year. Uh, we were able to find regulatory tools for people to get water. Uh, that's really gonna be our, that's one of our focuses, especially if our focus is on human health and safety as well. It's gonna be aligned with yours, I think. So I don't know what the nuclear option is with respect to municipality.
It's, so my my question is kind of coming from resident concern of, you know, because we're seeing these concerns, we're seeing these pictures. Um, it's, I think it's, back to the silver lining, I think it's growing awareness of the importance of water, that you can't take it for granted. The question is, you know, you know, dare we build one more house because we're not gonna have enough water? And so my question is coming from from kind of the lens of, are we gonna be able to get as much water out of the river, you know, this year as we did last year, or as much as we're entitled to?
Uh, I would say maybe, how's that? I don't know. I mean, I I really don't know. Uh, I'd be surprised if you're not, but I mean, that's predictive in some way, and we're gonna have to wait and see what we what we encounter uh, with respect to, you know, upstream from you guys. Um, can you, so the 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 growth of your community is is unrelated to what we're faced with this year. Like, that's a bigger question. Uh, as I mentioned, we're, you know, this is the acute response to a drought that we're seeing for twenty twenty-four. It shouldn't really factor into growth plans. Uh, you know, your transfer hopefully can get you to some place with respect to you being able to uh effectively grow to a, to where you need to. Uh, you're always gonna have to be aware of the water piece, a hundred percent you are. You're gonna have to mirror, I think, aggressive water conservation. Uh, you're gonna have to mirror some of the things like we saw in Okatoks, where you have rate changes depending on use. You know, I think there's a variety of tools that you're gonna wanna explore that at least give you some capacity to, you know, conserve and actually grow within the constraints of your of your license. So all of that is sort of longer term, but I'd never say you couldn't build another house. I think I'd lose my job and they would yell at me. But this year, that's not my concern, to be very honest. It's making sure everyone can, existing folks can get water, not future growth.
Right. Uh, yeah, so that's where the question was coming from. I know Okatoks has done a a great job with their water conservation and um, I certainly think that a Cochrane's water strategy rivals that. We've been in the water licensing, water tiers for quite a few years now, so. Um, and I do applaud the idea that the region is looking at kind of standardizing um, how we conserve waters. I think that'd be a a nice win, so. Um, I think that kind of wraps up the questions I had. Group, did we have any wrap-up questions? We're good.
Okatoks had a head start on you guys, I mean, because of the sheep, right? I mean, the bow is better.
The bow is better. I'll tell Mayor Thorne that.
Don't, please don't.
She'll find out one way or the other.
Please don't.
But um, yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. Did you have any like final messages or something you wanted to underscore with us?
I think, I I I mean, I've been asking different municipal groups to, you know, is uh, if you found our ability to engage and communicate with you folks has been effective, is there anything we can do better from your perspective? Is there any, you know, additional things that we should lean into to make sure that not just, you know, you folks at your level, but also the public are uh, better informed? Which one's that? The Rivers app? Rivers app is great. I would also encourage folks, we have a drought webpage. Uh, direct folks to our drought webpage for sure. It has updated forecasting information, but again, to circle back, if there's anything you think that we can do that would improve mostly the communication and engagement pieces of this, uh, or any tools that you think we could do to to help you engage with your stakeholders, I'd be happy enough to uh, to to learn about them for sure.
Yeah, I think mostly if we can just like lean in and help with the communication and the stakeholder engagement piece. Um, so we can work with you and make sure we have whatever websites and apps and tools that you've got that are out there. Uh, if we can, I think, connect with the team and then use our social media to to share those out, might just be the the best way that we can support each other through this.
So far, there's been no pitchforks or torches at any of my meetings, and so I think they've been going okay. No one's throwing rocks at me yet, and so.
Not June yet.
It's not my fault. Yeah, it's pretty soon, it's not my fault. Uh, thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, so sorry, just looking at my cheat sheets here, thank them, ask for the next item to proceed. So we will move on to bike Cochrane. I'd like to invite Mr. Paul Pro, Director of Operations, and I think you've got Mr. Robert Martins with you, and Jim Rooney is with you as well uh, to begin your presentation on bike Cochrans and a review of twenty twenty-three.
Perfect. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor Janong and councillors, for the opportunity to update you on our past year at Bike Cochrane. I hope we're not as scary as that last talk. Uh, my name's Paul Pro, I'm our Director of Operations, our Trails Director, and the Chair of our Active Transportation Committee. Tonight, I'll walk through the three pillars of Bike Cochrane, our events and programming, trails, and spend most of the talk tonight talking about active transportation. As usual, all of lots of good data, some pretty charts, and some beautiful photos of our members on bikes. As you'll see in our yearbook, that I'll ask Jim and Robert and Ed, three of my board directors with me, uh, to pass around to you as a memento of twenty twenty-three and Bike Cochrane. As they're doing that, I'd like to acknowledge a slight update to the mission of Bike Cochrane. We've uh, recognized more and more the investment our society has put into youth and families. And through our recent five-year strategic planning session, we agreed that it made sense to update our mission to recognize our commitment to all ages. I'll start with a few photos from some of the events and programming we had this season. Twenty twenty-three was the first year we offered a women's mountain bike camp called Ride, Empower, Connect. It's not uncommon for women to feel intimidated by a new sport or a new activity, and this has the ability to make mountain biking seem like it's not for them. Our Ride and Power Connect program exposed fifteen women to the fun that is mountain biking, helped them build their confidence in both riding and fixing their bikes, and we offered it completely free through the generosity of the Communities Choose Well Grant program. We've had many people reach out to us to see if we'll run this camp again in twenty twenty-four, and I can say that we're continuing to look for funding opportunities, but we sure want to turn this program into an annual way of sharing our love of bikes with new people. Twenty twenty-three saw the installation of two new bike repair stations, one at the Buffalo Bean Trails and one at West Brad Creek, paid for by our wonderful sponsors at Big Hill Cycle and Bike Brothers Shops. I'd like to also congratulate the town uh, on installing your first bike tool stand at the station. I'm personally excited to see this central location get more use for cycling and commuting in the in the future. This year, we also ran our third annual Bike Safety Day, where we taught kids the rules of the road, did helmet and safety inspections, helped them fix up their bikes, and ran them through a bike safety course as well. With great partnership of the Cochrane Kiwanis and community partners like Big Hill Cycle and Bike Brothers, Footstock, Sports for Life, Walmart, and our Spray Lake Rec Center, this event was a big success in helping over a hundred and fifty kids build confidence and learn to be safer on their bikes. We're proud that the town's Community Services Division is fully behind our twenty twenty-four Bike Safety Day planned for June first, and we're looking forward to expanding this event even further as we bring it back outside to the Launchpad Bike Park this year. We'll be hoping for good weather. Again, in twenty twenty-three, we ran our third annual oversubscribed five-week kids' bike camps at our Buffalo Bean Trails. Last year, we were able to double its size through the use of a federal government Community Services Recovery Grant. We know that more families want their kids to ride bikes, and this is one small way we're helping to support them at a cost that's cheaper than babysitting. A big shout out to our organizers of this year's edition as we sold fifty spots for our camp in fifteen minutes. You might think we're selling Taylor Swift tickets at that rate. Our Angry Hawks Kids Enduro Bike Race also ran last year and brought in over a hundred and fifty riders from Edmonton, Red Deer, Crowsnest Pass, Calgary, Brad Creek, and Canmore. With a brand-new machine-built berm trail on our Buffalo Bean Trails, we're proving that investing in our trails and our programming can make Cochrane a destination for mountain bike tourism. It's also worth noting that our weekly cross-country grassroots racing nights routinely attracts riders from Calgary and Brad Creek. So biking is already bringing people to Cochrane today. We also ran many group social biking rides in twenty twenty-three. We had rides that had kids too young to walk, rides and bikes that were and bikes that were older than me, riders battling cancer, blind riders, people trying racing for the first time along with some wily veterans. The majority of our rides started right in Cochrane, and we often rode trails that are being built and maintained by our awesome hundred percent volunteer Bike Cochrane Trail Builders. We hosted road rides, pathway rides, gravel rides, ladies-only mountain bike rides, mountain bike rides open to everyone of all ages, cross-country coaching and racing nights, and a super-popular glow bike ride that attracted over a hundred people in October last year. We believe that the easiest point of entry into riding a bike is riding a bike with a friend. In that spirit, we try to have as many open and welcoming opportunities for Cochraneites to try out a bike. We believe in connecting people along with connecting community through bikes, and so too does this council, judging by your strategic plan, that calls out committing to bring people together physically and socially. Next, we can look at some of the numbers from twenty twenty-three that helped to paint the picture of the growth of Bike Cochrane and some of our successes as well. Twenty twenty-three saw continued membership growth with another thirty percent growth in our membership, now sitting at over nine hundred members. This makes Bike Cochrane one of the largest member-funded not-for-profits in Cochrane. As I talked through in last year's presentation, more than three-quarters of our members are family members, making this a unique group of people who care about getting around the community safely, whether it's to school or a park, but also love to recreate on their bikes as well. It's also important to recognize that we not only speak for the mountain biking community, the road biking community, gravel bikers, which is actually the fastest-growing group of new bikers, people on cruiser bikes going to McCase for ice cream, along with a very fast-growing population on e-bikes. But more than ten percent of our members identify primarily as trail runners. The trails we maintain and build for bikes are equally wonderful for trail runners, for walkers, and for many other uses along with bikes. We improve trails for all users and for our whole community. Another number to see here is the number of Bike Cochrane's corporate sponsors. We view our more than twenty corporate sponsors as evidence that the work we're doing is making our community more bike-friendly, is resonating with small business owners as they put their own hard-earned money into Bike Cochrane to improve our community. Lastly, it's great to see that these aren't just local Cochrane companies, but we've broadened our support from Camelback from Montreal sponsoring trail building, Win Sport Bike Park, Canopy Lands, The Inside Line, and Kids Bike Canada, all from Calgary, seeing what we're doing and wanting to participate with Bike Cochrane. Since I talked about our corporate sponsors and our members, I thought it'd be useful to share a bit more around our funding model for Bike Cochrane. We are fortunate to have a well-balanced source of funds with memberships and grants being the two largest individual sources of funding. Bringing in now AGLC money through the use of fifty-fifty raffles and hopefully a casino in our future allows us to tap another source of funding. We sell beautiful merchandise in the form of hats, tukes, jerseys, socks, and stickers. We host a silent auction coming up again this year on April twenty-fourth at the Cochrane Legion, and we invite everyone here to come join us and bid on great cycling and non-cycling-related items. We also graciously acknowledge the town's contribution to funding our trail and active transportation work. Last year's funding paid for signage for the town's trails, a portion of our trail's insurance, certification for more of our chainsaw operators who clear deadfall off our trails, first-date training for some of our trail crew leaders, tools and supplies for trail building, along with helping to pay for the rental of our porta potty at the Launchpad Bike Park, since this is one of a very small number of public restrooms in the downtown core. This also pays for some of our active transportation work, which last year bought bike lights for kids, our e-bike rentals for the town's pathway workshop, which we hope to do again this year, and continued support of our counters to better understand how people are using our trails and pathways. Next year's funding is continuing to support our trail building and maintenance program with a new wayfinding signage program that will eventually support integration into the town's pathway wayfinding program that's building off the active transportation fund money we helped to bring into Cochrane. It'll also help pay for more of our trail leaders to get first dates certified, cover a portion of our insurance, continue to fund our trail trimming and pruning and clearing work. This year, we were able to purchase one new bike counter with the town's funding, and also got a private foundation, uh, my company actually, to pay for a third one, which will now enable us to do more complex counting and active transportation research within Cochrane. Our full accounting of this funding is filed with Community Services, but these are some highlights. Now that I've talked a bit about the income side of Bike Cochrane, it makes sense to touch on the expenses side. Sadly, the necessary evil of insurance takes about ten percent of our funds every year. This pays to insure our Launchpad Bike Park, but we also pay per kilometer of trail to insure both us, the town, Mount St. Francis Retreat Center, and the Cochrane Ag Society for Trail Liability. Half of our expenses go towards trails and our Launchpad Bike Park. I'll touch on this a bit later, but the maintenance and costs to operate a dirt bike park are a challenge, and we're looking to the future to improve this. Special events like Bike Camps for Kids, Angry Hawks Enduro, and new this year, the Ride and Empower Women's Bike Program took about ten percent, but we were able to fund this program through a Communities Choose Well Grant. Bike advocacy lets us reach out and make Cochrane a safer place for kids to ride through Bike Safety Day, safety brochures, and bike bells. Since we're one hundred percent volunteer-run, none of our expenses go to pay salaries, and you'll see our admin costs barely register here at less than one percent. Okay, one last chart, and then we'll talk more about the softer side of what we do. What's so impressive What's so impressive about this chart summarizing our society's volunteer hours isn't just the total at over 3,200 hours spent making Cochrane more bike-friendly. That's impressive for sure. What's more impressive is the number of volunteers committing time to our organization, with over 120 individuals taking time away from their families and lives to make Bike Cochrane so amazing. With almost 1,600 hours put into trail building and maintenance, this is by far the largest single area we invest in the community. This looks like our volunteers cleaning up garbage and debris along with deadfall that comes in our windstorms. This looks like repairing bridges and boardwalks and tread work to make these trails safer for kids on bikes. This looks like pruning trees and branches so that all users can see each other coming, reduce user conflict, and also reduce the chance of surprising wild animals. Now, we saw in last year's budget the town's trying to put things into full-time equivalent, so if I was to try to translate this time into full-time equivalent for the town's trails, it's likely somewhere between three to four FTE staff through the active spring, summer, and fall months, along with some of the winter planning work we assist with as well. So we'd argue we're a pretty sweet deal for the town and our taxpayers, giving something like a 20x return on value on the town's investment. As I've mentioned to council before, our trail's goal is that all residents in Cochrane can ride or walk a natural surface trail for their home anywhere in town without needing a car. We know that there are significant mental health benefits to being outside in nature, and we also know that pathways and trails are only becoming more vital to Cochrane as we become a healthier and more connected community. I wanted to give a sense of who our trail's leadership team is. These are the people who are committing time away from their families in order to make our town better for everyone. Our leaders range in age from 39 to 71, and we're supported with over 100 volunteers who give up their time for our trail crew sessions. I also wanted to share some of the reasons that our leaders give for why they gave their time to Bike Cochrane. You see, community, safety, a safe place for kids and families, a connection to the outdoors, and all this without having to drive. Got some photos here, but you've got the books in front of you. You can look as well. This last map shows where we manage over 24 kilometers of open trails within the Cochrane area, with about half of the trail length on townland and the other half being open to the public through trail stewardship agreements with Bike Cochrane that allow our community to recreate on private land. Specifically tonight, I'd like to call out and thank the Mount St. Francis Retreat Center and the community there for their trust and support in Bike Cochrane as we've helped them move from having a lot of passing use on their land to finding a way to safely and legally permit users to recreate on their land while respecting their silent retreats and their prayer community. We've also recently been awarded a grant from the Home Treasures folks to develop mental health-related interpretive panels and resting benches on the Brother Sun Trail, which sits on a beautiful south-facing portion of our big hill. You can see it on the map here in purple. 2023 also marked the beginning of the second phase of the Launchpad Bike Park with the signing of a 10-year lease for this important space. The value of the 10-year lease on this donated land exceeds $50,000 a year, and we're very grateful to the developer and Garmin Canada for making this happen. The Launchpad helps children and families experience the joy of biking and build their confidence in a safe and fun environment. It is centrally located across from Garmin with full public access and a seating area. The bike park's heavily used, and we estimate between 6,000 and 8,000 adults, teens, and children visit per season. In Phase 2 of this project, we are fundraising to pave, fix drainage, and improve the overall flow of the pump track. This will reduce the required volunteer time for track maintenance and allow kids to ride more of the almost 200 days of the year when we don't have snow on the ground. If the Phase 1 project that's there right now hadn't been built already, a brand-new bike park would be more like $300,000, and that's exactly the amount that the city of Oketoke just paid out of their Parks Department to build a bike park there. Bike Cochrane raised and paid for the first phase of this development to the tune of $130,000 in kind and in cash, and we're now seeking funding partners to complete Phase 2. I'd like to thank the town's Community Grants Program, Inter-Pipeline, and Bow Rivers Edge Campground for supporting us in getting the redesign plans done and the soil testing complete so that we're ready to tender this fall and hopefully build next year. We've already fundraised more than $30,000 of the $150,000 price tag for this asset and have grant applications out to Co-op, Rocky View County, and are planning to apply to the province through their C-FEP program as well. One note that I'd like to share with council is that the Rocky View Capital Grant Program may be funding as much as $30,000 out of this project, but they ask for matching dollars from the municipality where the asset is. Cochrane doesn't have a community capital grant program, but I'll be presenting our Launchpad Program to their REC Board Governance Committee in June, and I'm not sure what I'll tell them about matching Town of Cochrane dollars at that time. I'd like to use the last part of this talk to outline the learnings we've had on the active transportation front last year as we helped the town make progress towards the connected community we all want. What makes me wake up every day and invest time in Bike Cochrane is a belief that any child in any community in Cochrane should be able to safely wheel and walk to any school they choose. To that end, we have now completed two connectivity gap analysis that show where we know people want to be able to safely commute by bike, wheelchair, mobility scooter, by foot, and by e-bike. A huge thank you to this council and administration for funding the connectivity plan in the 2024 capital budget as you'll be able to leverage these analyses and our data sets to help our community catch up with the infrastructure deficit and make this community the connected and healthy community that our residents want. First, a quick look now at comments this council has made around active transportation. These were some of your comments to us as you ran for council in the last election, and I'm proud to note that all of you have said and now shown with your votes that you mean business. As Councilor Nagel says above, "It's time for Cochrane's Town Council to invest more in our pedestrian and bike pathways." We are so excited to see the paving project this year happening to finally connect Sunset to the Bow River Pathway System, thereby allowing your largest community the ability to get to the town's river network safely. We're very proud to have been part of bringing in $770,400 in federal active transportation funding to make this happen, but everyone here chose to make this a priority, and for that, Bike Cochrane thanks you. There are many more projects that collectively will help build out our all-ages, all-abilities, all-weather, non-vehicle transportation network, but this first one is a big one, and for that, you should pat yourselves on the back. One of the programs our Active Transportation Committee drives annually is a traffic study that we use to help quantify where people are using our pathway and roadway network to get around. I'm going to highlight a couple of findings from our 2023 program that I think will be helpful for this council to see. First, I'm going to go back to a talk I did for council back in 2021. So the question was, if you invest in pathways and safer places for bikes and people, does the usage increase? Anybody remember what the number was? This study showed a more than 400% increase in usage when council prioritized funding along with Canadian Pacific to open the Heartland CP rail crossing. I just wanted to use the internet Wayback Machine here to show some great data that this council should be proud of. Next, we're going to look at the results from the first full year of counting data done at the ranch. Part of the active transportation funding agreement with the feds is to gather before and after data on the area you're improving. This work has been done over calendar year 2023, and we continue to count this spot to ensure we understand the usage in the ranch. I actually just changed out the batteries, so it should be good for another few years. This work has been done with an optical counter, so it can't differentiate types of users or whether they're on bikes or scooters or feet, but it does tell us the number of people coming through the pathway. Here's the data for that spot plotted on a monthly chart. This easily shows the seasonality as we'd expect in Western Canada. One of the aspects we cited in our grant application for the ATF is that we expect to see increased pathway usage in the shoulder and winter seasons once this pathway is updated and paved. This is easy to understand if you go through the ranch during one of the warm-ups and freeze cycles, like right now, and you'll see that it's been forced to close. Once the pathway and the roadbed has been upgraded and the drainage improved, this corridor becomes an all-ages, all-abilities, all-weather pathway, and with this council's investment in the 1A highway corridor, there will be another way to get into the downtown core from the ranch without needing a car. If you can't see that number, we counted almost 80,000 users through the ranch last year. So that's a great baseline data point for you. Next, I'd like to discuss a key finding from our 2023 traffic study and help you understand an aspect that needs attention. Alongside our use of optical counters, Bike Cochrane employs tubed counters, as seen in the upper-right photo placed on Glenbow Drive. Our aim in counting bikes in this study was to gain insights into the utilization of painted bike lanes. By leveraging technology distinguishing between bikes and heavier vehicle such as cars, we've observed an anticipated flow of approximately 11,000 bikes through this lane per season. However, the more significant revelation I would like to highlight today is the presence of over 44,000 cars that we counted in the bike lane. Through extrapolation using AT numbers, we estimate that approximately 30% of the cars on Glenbow Drive encroach into and drive through that bike lane. This poses significant safety concerns. It's unacceptable, especially considering I wouldn't feel comfortable allowing my six-year-old to ride his bike to school in such conditions. Mistakes happen, and drivers may become distracted, but it's imperative that these errors don't result in harm to pedestrians or cyclists. Effective infrastructure design should mitigate such risks. We know how we can do better here and make it so that I would actually feel safe riding with my six-year-old to get to school and how Councilor Flowers could feel comfortable even if there was a gravel truck going by, as it did in our tour last year on Griffin Road. We know drivers can be distracted and make mistakes, but there are ways we can make it safer for all. Painted bike lanes, as evidenced, need to offer adequate safety measures. Many communities are now shifting focus towards safeguarding their most vulnerable members when constructing pathways alongside roadways. I did a talk for the town last year at our pathway workshop around understanding who rides bikes. One of the important messages to understand is that for every spandex-clad road biker, like our mayor or my finance director, who is more comfortable even riding on Highway 1, there are many, many, many more users who will only ride a bike to do groceries if they feel safe doing it. From a City of Vancouver graphic here, you see that almost 70% of the population feels comfortable in a protected bike lane or an off-street pathway. An interesting data point from one of our local bike shops is that they sold 20% more e-bikes last year than the year before. Our other bike shop said that they've now sold 500% more e-bikes in 2023 than they did in 2018. So the trend is definitely strong here. An electric bike helps to flatten the slopes of our Town of Cochrane and make it more accessible for more people to get around without cars. Our job as a community is to ensure that all of us are safe when we're out on our roads and pathways. Protecting this infrastructure will mean that more people will use it. If more people use it, that improves traffic flow for everyone who can't use a bike or a scooter or a mobility scooter or their feet to get around. I want to close by thanking this council and our administration for their support of Bike Cochrane. Specifically, we'd like to highlight the power duo of Michelle Delorme and Trish Cluany for making time and investing in us over the last year, and we'd also like to highlight the previous work done by Mitch Hamm in supporting our trails and active transportation work. We see a lot of opportunities for more trails in our communities, specifically in Rivercrest, and we look forward to having a trails policy that'll continue to allow consistent standards to be used to sustainably build out our trail network. We want to thank the town for helping us redesign our Launchpad Bike Park through the use of the Community Grants Program. We're very excited to work towards upgrading this important asset. We'd ask the town to help us fundraise for this important community asset. We see many opportunities in our town's pathways for improvements and investments. While the last few years have heavily invested in catching up our roadways and highways, and a huge thank you for doing this, it's now time to focus on improving the lives of people who are transporting themselves and their families without vehicles, whether that's by walking, running, in wheelchairs, on mobility scooters, or riding their bikes. We believe there's a great opportunity to learn about protected pathways in 2024 so that we can apply those learnings across our town and develop maiden Cochrane solutions for keeping us all safe in our cars and out of them. I'd like to close by thanking my wife Natalia and our boys Henry and Walter for allowing me to spend the time I do investing in Bike Cochrane as our society helps to make Cochrane more bike-friendly for everyone. Thank you, and I'll now take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrow. I think we probably will have a number of questions for you. I will start with Councilor Reed.
Thank you. As usual, brilliant presentation. Love the statistics. Just a couple of questions, Paul. The takeaways then for the town in terms of being able to support Bike Cochrane would be matching $30,000, as I'm noting?
That would be outstanding, and that would go a long way towards making sure we can get that money out of Rocky View County.
Understood. No guarantee, but understood, yeah. An infrastructure design, so is it actually possible to do what you're... What the Vancouver... Is it a private lane, or what is that term we use?
So ideally, protected bike lanes.
Yeah, protected bike lane. Is that possible on...
Absolutely, it's possible.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on Quigley, on Glenbow, on Griffin, all of those are possible. Ideally, you want to separate users whenever you can. In a lot of cases, we don't have enough space in the infrastructure, and so in that case, you start looking at how do you use the roadway but separate either by grades, by having it elevated a little, or by having protection through the use of concrete jersey barriers. City of Calgary has experimented quite a bit with bollards. We're in partnership with them, trying to see what's worked and what hasn't. They've lost a lot of their vertical bollards, just posts.
Right.
That doesn't tend to help, and it tends to be more of a maintenance issue. The biggest challenge is working with roads to make sure they have a proper snow clearing plan to deal with it all year, but it's absolutely possible.
Right, great. Thank you. That was important for me to know. The other two questions I had were, well, are you looking at additional trails for this coming year?
Our work plan this year involves mostly building on private land. We're working with Community Services to have our trails policy in place so that any new trails go through a pretty thorough process before being approved. The only plans we have for town trails this year are really for maintaining, for upgrading. There's a bunch of work we want to do in the ranch still for fixing trails up to our insurable standard, but we're not planning on doing any more building with the town's administration's support. We're not planning on doing any more of that this year in Cochrane land.
Paul, when you say private, do you mean working with developers or...?
Private land, so we have trails right now with Mount St. Francis, with the Retreat Center land, as well as with the Cochrane District Ag Society, and both those areas we're planning on building quite a bit this year.
And then the last question I had was, have you any concerns or... You've probably given some thought, and maybe this is a flash of lightning obvious, but the TransCanada Trail, what will the implications be for your organization with that coming forward?
Sure, yeah, we're very, very, very excited about the great trail coming to Cochrane. The biggest impact that we see is an increase in usage. Our traffic counting program has been focused on trying to understand what our baseline use is through the Bow River Pathway, and really to understand whether the increase in usage is so high that we start getting to a level where City of Calgary is, where we actually have to mode-split and have bikes be separated from pedestrians. I don't think... We're definitely not at that point now. Part of the question's going to be how much of an impact that looks like, so we'll be tracking to look at that. We look at the Legacy Trail between Canmore and Banff as an example. Over the course of nine years, they've had over a million users on that trail, which is absolutely phenomenal. I don't think we'll see anything to that extent, but having said that, I think it's important to look at usage capacity and just making sure that everybody feels safe on our pathway system.
I think we'll have you surprised how much use it's going to get, but thank you.
Councilor Flowers?
Hi, Paul. That was an amazing presentation. I'm always just so impressed with how many partners you have in the community and how many kids' lives you've affected and improved with all the work that you've done. And I thoroughly enjoyed the trip last year when you took us around on the electric bikes, except for the part where I almost got ran over by the truck. Otherwise, it was great. It gave me the confidence to go on the Legacy Trail from Canmore to Banff and back, which was a beautiful day. So thank you for that, and just keep up the great work, and I'm glad that you're out there helping the community, and I hope that we can help you too.
Councilor Nagel?
Yeah, like others who've set up here, thank you very much for everything you and your organization do. It's great to see you guys here. You're very valued in our community, so thank you. The question I have is what you think might be the best and most cost-effective way of making protected bike lanes? Like, not the best, like, you know, the dream version. It's like, how do we do this the most cost-effective way so we can actually get it done throughout town?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilor Nagel. We've been working with administration, with roads, to look at which options we have. We're looking at a pilot program to try out a few different options, both to see what does it look like, both for capital but also for operating expenses, and whether or not that's actually sustainable over the long term. Ideally, I mean, the perfect utopian world is...
Ideally, I mean, the perfect utopian world is everybody split. That's not going to be usable in a lot of places that we have today. Quigley, Glenbow Drive, Griffin are three of the biggest that we, railway as well, would be three of the areas we'd want to look at. Part of it's figuring out the right balance between how much of a barrier is important so that people are safe but also feel safe. Part of the challenge, if you want kids to bike to school downtown, for instance, at the new school there, is they need to both be safe, statistically safe, but also that their parents feel that they're safe going through there. So there's a perception of safety that has to come with that, too. If we simply put up vertical ballards and posts, I mean, I can drive through that, right? And so it's part of, how do you find that balance between being protected but also not being ludicrously expensive and gold-plated, right? So we've been working with a few different partners to try to find, whether it's rubberized options, concrete options, cast-in-place, pre-cast, and so we're trying to see which is the best one based on what the town already has for assets. We may be able to do some pilot work later this year or next year with some of the assets the town already has that hopefully won't cost us very much and see what actually helps and what do people want.
So something that I was thinking, if full jersey barriers weren't available for whatever reason, have you ever seen a community effectively use the smaller kind of parking blocks, you know, they put in a parking lot?
Yep, absolutely.
Does that work?
The biggest question is what's the, what's the speed of vehicles going by? One of the studies we looked at on Quigley Drive is that that's a 30-kilometer-an-hour roadway. The average road speed going through there is somewhere between 55 and 70, and the max speed that was counted on there was 130. So you can put up small parking barriers. Are they going to be effective at speed when somebody's distracted or falling asleep or texting on their phone? So absolutely, it can be effective, and in fact, that's actually what Garmin just did in their parking lot to allow separated usage to come through there. In that case, they used cast-in-place, but pre-cast parking can absolutely work depending on the speed of the vehicles that are on the motorway.
So probably better than a line but not as good as a jersey barrier?
It's always going to be a scaling answer. There's some beautiful new piece of infrastructure, City of Penticton just put in, that has metal railways that block, and you'd have the opportunity to have cowboy imagery and all kinds of things that way. They're more expensive, but they could be really beautiful and might fit into a tourism plan.
All right, great. Thanks again.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor Janong?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Colleagues asked them all, and your presentation was amazing. I just wanted to give you a shout out and say thank you for the work. Appreciate a group that is well-organized, well-run, data-driven, and solution-based. It's not always just you're here poking at us, poking in the eye, asking for more. You actually are contributing, and you've shown that through the volunteer hours, et cetera. So it is a pretty sweet deal for Cochrane. Just want to say thank you to you and your board and all the volunteers. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor Janong.
So I did just, maybe, I think, maybe just some comments. I really do appreciate that we're advocating into the protected bike lanes. I think I've shared before that my family lives in Riverview, and I tried once to bike with my kid up to the Garmin Launchpad, and I don't know if I've ever been so scared in my life. So we won't be doing that again until there's a safe way to be doing that, and as you said, to feel safe as well. So that's one of the things I'm really glad to see that you're advocating for is how can we make that happen? And of course, you said, you know, you get up and how do you get kids safely to school on their bikes? I think that's a great vision to be striving for. And yeah, I just wanted to say like a shout out again, I think same common theme, what I've always appreciated about your group, how volunteer-driven you are, but how you see a problem, come up with a solution, and then take it the next steps further because you show up with, you know, the sweat equity and the finances to make that solution come to life. And I think that's really the difference-maker in what's allowed your organization to kind of bring your vision to life. So I really appreciate your innovation and the passion of your group in making Cochrane a more accessible place and finding better ways for us to get around. So thank you very much to your board and all your volunteers in making that happen, and thank you to your family for freeing you up to spend some time with us. On behalf of council and administration, thank you very much. Sorry, crew. I think what we do is we are going to take a 10-minute break, come back at 7:45 or so, and then we will get into the item 5A and beyond. So 10-minute break.
It's good to see you again.
It's good to be here tonight.
Excellent. Looking forward to your presentation onward.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and the rest of members of council. Tonight, Mr. Jeff Alliston from the Metrix Group, he's representing the council appointed by the he's appointed auditors by council, and he will be providing an update on the status of the qualified issues that was raised from the 2022 audit. And in closing, I will be providing counsel an update on our 2023 year end. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Alliston.
Welcome.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me here tonight. Here to give you guys, as Alvin said, just an update on where we're at in relation to the 2022 audit financial statements, work we've done to date. So we first started with tangible capital asset projects. So there we had issues in relation to having a complete set of data in order to audit that, to make sure that the tangible capital assets were complete and accurate at year end. So we have gone through the process of looking at data, as I said, here over the last five, 10 years, kind of assessing that and where the costs additions and all that should be when it comes to the town of Cochrane's tangible capital assets. So I would say that we are substantially complete, the 2022 tangible capital assets. One area we had noted is we did note there were, when you construct your own assets internally, you kind of incur costs for that. We've noticed there was additional, I guess, would say estimates being added on for almost like a fair market value of something would be. So we've corrected those because usually when you, again, spend money, it's based on what you spend, not having an additional, you know, adjustment, say, for fair markets. So that was adjusted through contributed assets, so that was cleaned up. So I'm pretty confident in our 2022 data that we have the numbers we need here to go forward from there. We have since then began a bit on the 2023 year, one forward as well. But yeah, the 2022 year substantially complete. We just need to come up with journal entries and kind of just, you know, tweaking and just going through a few things to make sure those descriptions and stuff are where they need to be. The next big project is the off-site levies. So this is a large project. So there we currently have 102 developer levies that we are reviewing to make sure that they have been accounted for correctly within the town's financial statement. So with that said, when you have developer agreement, you would have, say, collected funds upfront. Those amounts previously have been recognized through revenue into your reserves. Based on the Municipal Government Act, you're required to spend those funds on tangible capital assets within your municipality. So we would view that as being deferred contribution. So it's almost as if you would receive an MSI capital grant and you haven't spent it yet. Once you spend it, then you recognize the revenue. So we're looking at these agreements to identify which ones have been collected within a timeframe and then adjust those accordingly into deferred contributions. Another key area in this is did the town of Cochrane spend any money upfront? On an area in which case developer money will be collected later in order to fund what was there. So did you build a big water line? Did you build a big sewer line, something like that? So again, we're looking at those type of projects to see if there's any front-ended costs and then making sure those are accounted correctly in your financial statements as well. So we have began work on the off-site levies. There are quite a few to go through and not every agreement's the same. You know, some are through council motions, some have agreements, some have this receipt or permit. So is that even in accordance with developer agreements or should be something else? So again, trying to recognize that revenue treatment when it came to those items and then making sure those are correctly accounted for when we get to the next fiscal year. So that's kind of a status of where we're at in relation to off-site levies and in relation to tangible capital assets. So I guess, I don't know if anybody maybe has any questions that they specifically on anything, but I think, again, tangible capital assets were substantially complete for 2022. Off-site levies, we are getting rolling on it. And there was a lot of data that we, you know, people in the town had to collect, go back, find for us, but we have the data, so we are, again, working through it, so.
Excellent. We will begin questions with Counsel Reed.
Yeah, thank you. So previously, there was some concerns based on little or no data that they, that our audit, the sky was falling, let's put it that way. And now that we have some more factual data, it looks like there are two areas of concern then, right, with the 23 consolidated financial statement. That is a tangible capital assets, which you've said, I understood you to say that you addressed and you're working through the off-site. But now that we have facts, is the, in our package, it says, I'll just quote, "It's important to note the town municipal overall financial position is strong, that this work is ensuring that our reporting, tracking and internal systems are in place, along with the best, aligned with the best practice and reflective of a community of our size." So I'm just trying to get my head around, what was the issue? Is it, there was nothing criminal, there was nothing? I mean, is it just tidying up these loose ends? Is that what it is or making it better so we go forward?
Yeah, I think it was just the information, how it was being presented. So, you know, if there was, say, assets that were, you know, either being expensed that should have been capitalized or, you know, accidentally recording the asset twice, maybe, like stuff like that, where we're kind of cleaning up that, those worksheets or the listing of what assets the town actually has and making sure that those are complete and accurate. So there were some issues involved in the accounting for those, how they were reflected within your financial statements or within your, you know, within your sub-ledgers or your asset programs that you're using internally. So that's where a lot of the cleanup has kind of come. And then be able to kind of move forward with a better set of data, be adding those additions on correctly, adjusting them through. I know internally, you know, in the past, you've had, you know, within your accounting structure, there's a lot of, there's different layers in there. So it's not just, you know, you spend money and it goes in the capital assets and the cash goes out. There's internal accounts where you're funding through a department and you have expenses in departments. So I think that got a little muddy, I guess you could say, and we had to kind of go in there and kind of clean it up so that it was, you know, so that's showing correctly on the financial statements consolidated.
So I guess the second question I have, it kind of suggests that we didn't have the capacity to be able to deal with that. And do you believe going forward, if we have these processes in place, that we have staffing capacity as a third party looking in on this?
Well, I mean, I think, I think time will tell for that because, I mean, we're going to do the 2022. We are going to help the finance department with the 2023 areas in this. And then going forward, you know, with the worksheets and everything completed, we would expect that they'd be able to continue on with what we have and have the, you know, staff in place to do that. And also with us kind of being, I guess, gone through the work and having the people available, we will be definitely available if they have questions on some stuff too and be able to give a hand as that transitions to.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the last thought I have is it's not a question of mismanagement, just a question of resources and appropriate procedures done.
Yeah, yeah, I would, you know, I don't know, it's weird, I feel, I don't know if it's post-COVID or whatever, but it's been more common than not that we're having to support or help or adjust things than we used to, maybe 10 years ago. I don't know if, why? I don't know if it's the accounting standards becoming more complex or, you know, lack of accountants in the municipal industry potentially, you know, different than private sector and not-for-profit, right? So it is a different beast there. But yeah, it is, it's becoming more common. I wish I had an answer or why that was happening or what to do, but it's not uncommon that we would be, you know, fixing this. I mean, I've, again, I've adjusted off-site levies at other municipalities. I have tangible capital asset qualification, other ones that we're working through as well, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Flowers, over to you.
So it sounds like you've got a lot of work to do ahead of you yet. Will that make us late with our 23 audit?
No, I'm not expecting us to be late with 2023. You know, obviously, we kind of have it scheduled, well, I mean, we're, well, I may let Alan speak to that, but yeah, so obviously, the May 1 deadline is fast approaching, but we've scheduled some time later to begin the audit. But yeah, I don't, I mean, I guess, I don't think we'll be making the May 1 deadline, no. But I think there is a June 30 deadline, kind of the second one, so I think our target would be to make that one.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on this side of the bench? We're good? Okay. So I did have a few questions, just to take an opportunity. Like, I know your presentation was around the tangible capital assets and the tracking pieces, but kind of the piece, I mean, in 2022, yeah, we'd received a qualified audit, which is why we brought in your firm to help us kind of get our feet back underneath us and reset things so that we can move ahead with a clean process and clean data. So with that, then, I think my question is too full. I mean, and somebody asked me this this last week, they're like, oh, yeah, whatever happened with the missing, you know, $5 million, which I understand was a, it was kind of a grant allocation challenge, but could you just restate that one again?
If I could just quickly jump in, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Aleem is going to speak to that specifically when he joins the podium in a few moments.
Okay, then I'll save that as a pending question then. And then, yeah, following up on a similar question with the work that you've done, you did identify that you believe we now have the HR capacity with the righting of the ship to be able to move ahead with clean deliverables on our financial side.
With the people you have in place, with the team?
Yes.
Yeah, I would hope so. I mean, again, we're just working through, I mean, our work that we've been doing on this, we've been dealing with the team and getting responses and getting information. So I'm pretty happy with that and our progress that we're making in regards to what we're getting there. So, but yeah, time will tell when we start the 2023 audit. We have done interim work, you know, we've done that, completed that to date. So, you know, all is, you know, we're kind of going, we're going in the right path.
Excellent. And I think that's the, that's what we hope for, right? Like mistakes, errors happen.
Yep.
And the municipality was under a lot of pressure. So what we really want to have happen is identify what the challenge was, apply the correct resources and come out with a better solution on the better end, which we're working through right now. And so as you'd identified, if I understood this correctly, the 2023 audit is going to be late. We're going to be aiming for a second deadline, but you're confident that kind of the data that we've captured and looked at through 2022 is setting us up for a non-qualified audit to come back? Is that correct?
Yeah, for sure. Like where we're going to end with the 2022 tangible capital assets, then we're looking at doing the additions, amortization for 2023, like that should be clean and good in matter of getting the information to put into the system and what we have. But I'm confident that the starting point is correct because there was, yeah, definitely stuff from other years that were affecting things, so, yeah.
Excellent. So, yeah, that rounds up my questions for you. I understand we're getting a second part of the presentation?
Well, hey, thanks for having me again and I'm sure I'll be seeing you guys soon, actually. It's middle of March, so, yeah.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Your Worship, I'm going to provide an update on the 2023 year end. It's in progress, but as you know, it's unprecedented that a finance staff is working on cleaning up a previous year's audit as well as working on a current year's audit. And also, there's a new standard that took effect December 31, 2023, for year-end financial reporting, which is the asset retirement obligation, which is another big project. So with those three things in mind, speaking with administration, we've decided that we will be seeking an extension for municipal affairs that will come from the C O's office. And we are looking at presenting the audit financial statements June 24th and filing our audit financial statements and our financial information return with municipal affairs on June 30. So as Mr. Allison stated, I, once 2022 has been cleaned up and we've been able to resolve all the issues with the qualified, I do not see there will be an issue with the town receiving an unqualified opinion for 2023's audit. Now, with respect to the question you raised about the $5 million, I personally did my own analysis and in research, using the same methodology that I had used with previous municipalities when working with grant funding, especially when it comes to capital projects for our budgets. So what I did is, as I typically look at the other projects that are approved by municipal affairs and I compare that to the statement of funding and expenditures that's filed with municipal affairs every year. So what I can confidently say to counsel, conclude that the calculation that was used to present what was uncommitted or what's free for capital projects, it was overstated. In other words, there was too much money than what it really actually was. So there's no misappropriation, there's nothing like that, it's just the calculation was incorrect. So as a simple example, let's say someone was to do this calculation and in actuality, there's only half a million dollars in uncommitted, but without taking consideration what was approved versus the uncommitted, they used half a million. So they overstated what was available by $4.5 million. I believe that's what happened here.
Okay. And I do appreciate, you know, the clarity and the research on that and understanding the scope of work you've had on your desk since joining us. And I certainly appreciate that, you know, you're bringing your vast experience and then bringing kind of a newcomer lens to the Cochrane financial story and it's great to be able to get that clarity, so I do appreciate that. I'm not seeing any other questions for you or Mr. Allister. Oh, sorry, Counsel Nagle.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Just thank you very much to everybody involved in getting this all cleaned up. I know you kind of inherited this mess, so thanks very much.
Welcome.
Excellent. Yeah, in that case, yes, I was just going to say on behalf of counsel, thank you to you and Mr. Allister and your teams on this report and all the great work you're doing for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item 5B, which is Cutric's Performance Simulation and Zero Emission Vehicle Implementation Rollout Planning Project Update. So that was short.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. So tonight, we're honored to have Yosepa, the president and CEO of Cutric, and Mohammed. He's the senior scientist and project lead, presenting the study on the electrification potential of Cochrane's public transit system. So this study, supported by the Government of Canada's Zero Emission Transit Fund, evaluated the feasibility of transitioning Cochrane's gasoline bus fleet to battery electric buses, finding identified cost challenges and infrastructure gaps. However, coupled with the awareness of the evolving trends in electrified transit, this study sets the stage for the potential future adoption of electric buses. Yosepa and Mohammed will walk us through the study's insights, offering valuable perspectives on the challenges and opportunities of sustainable transit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for having us and we would like to really, Your Worship, and I'm not sure if I refer to the mayor as Your Worship and the deputy mayor as deputy mayor or the reverse for today, so I'll say deputy mayor and Your Worship.
I can be the deputy worship.
Deputy worship, we'll go with that. So we really want to thank you for inviting us here today and I do want to thank your staff. Yuchin and Michelle have been fantastic. We've thrown a lot of technical data at them and a lot of science in a short period of time and there's more to come, so we really appreciate the time that they've taken to work with us through this. So we'll take you back a little bit to pre-audit discussions and to the environmental piece that was presented a little bit earlier by some of the delegations. I'll move through right now and I will start off by apologizing for the amendment. We were the cause of the amendment to your agenda. We shared a penultimate version of our technical report with your team and we did not inform them properly that it was confidential and contains our intellectual property. So we asked for it to be removed so that we could go through the final revisions and we'll work with your team to make sure counselors get that full report. We just ask who doesn't get put to the world wide web for that reason. But the presentation is public and scrubbed for intellectual property so that we haven't breached any of our non-disclosure agreements with manufacturers of products or our own IP. So apologies for that little mix-up on our part. That's our error for not properly clarifying the confidentiality. So we'll move through this and I've got Mohammed here with me because he's got quick access to all of our data tables in case anybody is a science junkie and would like to get into the weeds on any elements of this, we'll try and pull up some of the tech specs for you. I'm going to move through fairly rapidly, the overall scope of work, some of the assumptions that go into this, some of the preliminary simulations that we've pulled out that show us you really just don't have a clear winner in Cochrane in your current allocation of battery electrification, and we'll walk you through why. Our facility assessment assumptions, what was included, what was not, the assets, the infrastructure costs, the demand and energy costs, a life cycle assessment which is specific to greenhouse gas emissions, life cycle assessments to show you what the full picture of electrification is here in Alberta, which is a very specific case given the nature of the grid, which is unique in Canada. The economic analysis, which looks at if you go this way and you include all the costs, is it good for the pocketbook or not for the taxpayers? And then we always conclude on a social analysis which says, if you can do all this stuff and you can electrify, where should you put the vehicles first because not all areas are equal? And in larger cities, this has become more important where we do articulate that you shouldn't put the cleanest, best technology in the richest communities, you should put it in the poorest communities that need it the most. So this has become much more impactful in the last years and we'll walk you through that. So the scope of work that we set out to initiate with your team with some support from the Zero Emissions Transit Fund federally, which we deploy with the federal government under its Zero Emissions Transit Capital Programming, where they're trying to get 5,000 electric buses out the road by 2025, 2026. And good news, we're actually going to blow past that number in terms of commitments in Canada, but not necessarily rolling stock on the road. But bad news, there's just tons and tons of more work to do across the country and not everybody will be able to move that way swiftly. So under the scope of work, we looked at your full COLT fleet right now and its current operations. We looked at your facilities needs and then we looked at the economic, environmental and social piece. So I'm going to walk you through this table. There's quite a few tables in here, there's even more in the full technical report, but let me walk you through this because everything flows from this table and the rest of the presentation. The first thing to say is that we were asked to look at electrifying your current COLT service. And your current COLT service has six vehicles. There's five vehicles and one redundant vehicle or one, sorry, four plus one, that's right. And we grew it and we grew it in our analysis because of your growing ridership, where you would grow it anyhow and that was the expectation of the city, you've got to grow that service anyhow. So what we've looked at is electrifying through battery electric powertrains. We did not look in this study at hydrogen electric, that's pretty typical. In most of our studies, we look at battery and hydrogen in combinations of fleets, but in this one, the interest was really just on battery electric platforms for the kind of shuttles that you use and the kinds of vehicles. So the first thing to note is in the top table, you can see some of the features we looked at. We looked at three conditions, summer, winter, spring and fall. Summer is kind of bad because you turn on air conditioning and that eats up the battery. Winter is really bad because you turn on heating and that eats up the battery. And spring and fall is the best for any electric vehicle, whether it's a bus, a coach, a car, it's going to be your best because generally the HVAC is not turning on and it's not draining the battery, so you get more range out of your vehicle. We looked in your town, traffic impediments, so that means every stop and start that your vehicles currently experience. And they are on demand, so that can vary, but we were able to map that out very precisely because your operator has telematics on the vehicle, which means we were able to pull all the data points and basically map out and model out exactly how many times does it stop and start and turn and slow down. And for an electric vehicle, that's really important because it's not a perpetual motion machine, so you do gain energy when you slow down through regenerative braking, but you never make as much back as you expended. And so when you accelerate again, you slow down and accelerate, it just eats up the battery. The best life for any electric vehicle, whether it's your car, your bus or any truck that's electrified, is a steady state of speed. That's always the ideal and that is absolutely not what transit is, it's the extreme opposite in all cases. So we really have to look at those impediments. Then in your situation, we looked at your ridership. Now, the vehicles you have right now can carry up to 20, 25 people, but your average ridership, based on the data we were provided, was about six people onboard. The weight of a human being, we take a Canadian average of 75 kilograms, it does impact the draw, it's a load on the battery pack. So we didn't assume a full vehicle, we looked at your average load. You can look at the worst case and the best case, there are some cities where they ask us to look at like passengers like sardines on a You can look at the worst case and the best case. There are some cities where they ask us to look at like passengers like sardines on a on a bus because they have crush capacity. You don't have that right now in Cochrane, but you may in the future. Uh so that's the load. And then HVAC for summers, I noted, we look at your air conditioning drying seventy percent of the HVAC auxiliary power load. In winter, the HVAC, we assume it's it's heating all the time, that it never turns off in the car. Uh and then in spring and fall, that it's at fifty percent on and off. In terms of the study, we then looked at three bus models. There's not that many models out there. So a few years ago, you could count on your hand the number of car, electric car models out there. Now there's dozens. In the bus world, it's not that way. It's really a monopoly landscape. Uh there are not that many models you can pick from. Uh and in your case, for the size of vehicle you have, it's a unique type of vehicle. Most transit buses are forty to sixty feet. But in your case, they're twenty twenty five feet type lengths. These are unique vehicles. They tend to be more expensive because they're unique vehicles and there's not as many product uh producers of these vehicles. So we looked at the twenty four five foot model that's available in the marketplace today that's fully electric. We looked at a thirty foot model um that's in the marketplace and another thirty foot model. But the two thirty foot models do have two very different configurations and this is quite important. On the battery capacity side, most people look at like how much battery do I have? I want a bigger battery. And bigger battery uh doesn't always make sense because bigger battery means a lot more cost. And right now in the landscape, it is typical for manufacturers to pay about a thousand dollars a kilowatt hour. So you add a hundred kilowatt hours to your battery pack. You get a lot of range, but you also add a hundred grand to the cost of your battery pack and you have to refurbish that thing in seven years. So the costs add up astronomically very quickly. So we always try to look at how small of a battery pack can you get away with because it's gonna be cheaper and less cost to refurb. Uh in this bus, in bus number one, you have a hundred, about a hundred kilowatt hours. We have the plus sign there because we don't put the specifics. That's intellectual property of the manufacturer, so a few averages there. Um bus number two is two hundred kilowatt hours, so double the battery pack. And bus number three has two hundred fifty kilowatt hours. Uh those are the only models really available to you and they're not even easily available, all of them, but they are available in the marketplace today in North America. Um the charging times, this, we put the times here for ease of consideration, but each of these buses charges according to different power levels. So in bus number one, in the slow charging, it's about ten to twenty kilowatts of power. That's pretty low. Um that's just a little bit above a level two car charger, so it's fairly slow charging, which means if that's the only charging system you have access to, it's about four and a half hours to fill that thing up or to charge it up, even though it's only a hundred kilowatt hour battery pack. Bus number two takes about three and a half hours. It's double the size of battery pack. Um but it doesn't take double the hours because it charges with a hundred ten kilowatt charger. So you get the benefit of bus two having a much more powerful battery or charging capacity. And bus three is the same. It uses a hundred ten kilowatt uh charging system. Uh it it can go up to a hundred ten rather. Um I'm sorry, my mistake. I I jumped to the fast charging. In bus number two and three, they can use a hundred ten kilowatt. In uh bus number one on fast charging, they're using sixty, approximately forty five, forty five kilowatts. And then in bus two and three, my apologies, um they're slow charging, just for about sixty kilowatts, yeah. So you have these charging systems. The charging systems will vary therefore. Um and you might be buying a charging system that is, say, twenty kilowatts of power or fifty kilowatts of power or a hundred. But the bus will never absorb that power. There's no bus make or model out there that will ever absorb a hundred percent of the power and the electrons flowing through that thing. Same with your cars. If you buy an electric car, you'll never get a hundred percent of the electrons or a hundred percent of power level. So you do have to look at what it averages out and that results in the charging time. So when you look at bus number one, if it is plugged into its faster charger, uh which is up to forty five kilowatts of power, it can charge up in two hours. And bus number two, if it's plugged into its hundred ten kilowatt charger, it can charge up to uh in a hun- an hour and a half. And if you look at bus number three, it can take about two hours. So that's a lot of data, um but the reason for that is because it all plays itself out in the cost. All of this has an impact on how many buses do you need to cover your routes and the time that you have with the passenger load that you have, with most importantly, the driver schedules you have in an eight-hour window. So when you start to play with all of those variables, you start to have a limited number of options available to you and we'll walk you through that. So looking at those three bus models and just to remind you, those three bus models in summer, winter and spring and fall, so playing out all the permutations possible and combinations of season, bus, battery capacity and charging capacity. We see the following results. I'll focus on the left-hand side. Your Saturday schedule doesn't change that much. Some transit agencies have radical variations on the weekend because they try to cut drivers and then they'll patch blocks together and suddenly the blocks become twice the length of a normal route. So you see these drop-offs and of success in the weekend. You don't have that. You're generally pretty consistent in the weekday and the weekend. So I'll focus on the weekday. On the weekday in the summer, when we look at your ridership, your routes and where the vehicles go and all of those tech specs I just walked through. In the summer, bus number one, which to remind you, has a hundred kilowatt battery pack, a kilowatt hour battery pack rather, get gets about point eight five kilowatt hours per kilometer. So this is your efficiency, your range value. This is what people care about when they go to buy an electric car. So what that means to interpret it at a hundred kilowatt hour battery pack at point eight five kilowatt hours per kilometer, it means that you're gonna get about a hundred and seventeen kilometers out of that battery pack. That's what it means. If you go next and you look at the winter, the same vehicle in the winter with the same routes, the same passengers, the same speeds, the same HVAC, uh uses about one point zero six kilowatt hours per kilometer. That looks like a tiny decimal move, but it results in uh dozens of kilometers chopped off your range. That results in something like ninety four kilometers in range from the same battery pack. So in the summer, that same vehicle gets you about a hundred twenty. In the winter, you're getting about ninety five. That is twenty five kilometer range difference. That has a huge impact because your COLT service uh will travel a certain number of kilometers through the day and twenty five kilometers, as you will see, leads to high lack of success. So high failure rates. Uh that's that's a large drop-off. Uh you can run the same calculation through the rest of the table, but what it shows you is bus number two and bus number three. Um not surprisingly, bus number three uses the most amount of energy of all of them because it has the biggest battery pack and they're heavy. So the buses are thirty feet. They're not twenty five feet, bus number two and five, uh two and three, so they're longer, more steel, more metal, more weight. And then they've got two hundred and two hundred fifty kilowatt hour battery packs, so they're just heavier. They eat up a lot more energy, so you can see the impact. But because they have a much larger battery pack, you're still getting better range. As an example, in summer, bus number three, you have two hundred fifty uh kilowatt hour battery pack on that bus. You're about one kilowatt hour per kilometer, point zero six five. You're getting about two hundred forty kilometers of range out of that battery pack, even though it's using more energy per kilometer than your first bus. So that's that's the calculation. None of this matters actually if it can deliver. You know, most people won't really care. Most agencies won't care how much energy it consumes per kilometer if it can deliver your service. Because electricity costs, although it's not what we're typically thinking of as Canadians today in a day of inflation, electricity costs are relatively cheap in comparison to diesel or gasoline. So when you put electricity through a propulsion system, it's always gonna come out cheaper than diesel, gasoline and natural gas in any physics environment. The rest of the system might be more expensive, but the per kilometer bus to bus is gonna be cheaper. It's just the laws of physics and thermodynamics. So when you take that and you then apply it to your system, so we've taken these numbers, we've now applied it to your system. I'll take a look at the top three. I'll ignore Saturday for now. Bus number one, this is the successful shifts. And what this means is if you buy that bus that's in the market now with a hundred kilowatt hours on it, it's generally the cheapest of all three, as you'll see momentarily. Um it will run out of power during an eight-hour or four-hour shift, depending on the, like, we took the shifts that you actually have and most of them are eight-hour shifts. So it will run out of power. It will have a forty percent success rate, which means about sixty percent of the time during the day, it will run out of energy in the middle of the day while the driver's driving it without coming back to the depot. So this slide shows you the battery electric bus, so BEB stands for battery electric bus. If it leaves the depot with a full power charge, which it should overnight, it will run out of power in the summer, about sixty percent of the time. Bus number two has a two hundred kilowatt hour battery pack, so double the energy, more expensive, more heavy, all of that comes with it. But you get almost a hundred percent success, so you don't lose power. And then bus number three is even bigger battery pack, even heavier, even more costly, as we'll see, but you get a hundred percent success. So that's just the summer line. You can go through winter, spring and fall roughly the same. It means that if you go with the bus number one configuration, you're gonna have to come back to the depot to charge up in the middle of the day or figure out how to install chargers that are unique to that vehicle in the middle of your town so they can charge up while they're on demand picking up uh rides. It's possible and what you want to know is, is it cheaper to buy the bigger battery pack and a bunch of them and run that heavy vehicle or is it cheaper to buy smaller battery packs and more chargers and then deploy the chargers? The energy has to come some way and so let's take a look at that. We took a look at a few of the considerations. We took a look at the fact your ridership is growing. You have a set number of hours, but you're looking to grow potentially tho- those hours. We looked at what's already planned, which is the growth of hours of operation from sixty hours right now to ninety hours. Um and we looked then at two scenarios. So here, we looked at all three buses. For right now, we're gonna eliminate bus number two going forward in this study and the reason for that, it's in the full technical report. But bus number two gets you almost there, but it's not the worst situation and it's not the best situation. So in the next two scenarios, we look at the worst and the best from a success perspective, so you can land somewhere in between. And we take into all of the uh these considerations into account, namely your growth, the expected growth you already have for COLT. Scenario number one, technically is your worst from an energy perspective. It's gonna run out of power the most. That's that twenty five foot bus. It assumes the bus has overnight charging, but to overcome this failure, these failure rates, we've also assumed it's gonna go back to the depot, charge up for a little bit of time and go back out in an eight-hour shift. And then scenario two, we looked at the bigger battery pack and we assumed it leaves the depot and it does not come back to the depot. Okay, so it's out on the road. It doesn't have to waste time coming back to depot to recharge. And what we wanted to know is which one's cheaper and which one's greener, which one saves more emissions and which one's cheaper for the town. Uh and then we start to look at what configurations will work. So here's the first outcome of it, just looking from the physics standpoint, to get enough energy into the vehicles to serve the growth uh fleet that you have. So basically the growth environment where you had intended to grow already. The base case scenario right now is for your growth, you're going to need six buses and two spare for a total of eight buses. That's the gasoline situation right now for COLT. The intention is to serve your current growing riders. You're going to have to grow your vehicles from five to eight. Um if you use the electric bus scenario one, which is the twenty five foot bus, a hundred kilowatt hours, to serve the same number of people, same number of rides, you will need twelve buses and three chargers. So it's a doubling of the number of vehicles you need because of the level of energy you need to serve the same community. Um your spare ratio will be again, two buses and one charging system for a total of fourteen buses and four charging stations. So to replace eight gasoline COLT vehicles, you'd have to go to fourteen one hundred kilowatt hour electric buses and four charging stations at the depot. Or you go to a bigger battery pack, uh the thirty footer, and you can get away with six buses as the minimum required, two spare for a total of eight buses and six charging stations. So right now, it's starting to look like scenario two looks better. It requires fewer replacement vehicles. Looks like a one-to-one replacement, but you've got to add the charging stations. The buses will have enough energy to go out, serve the community, come back and not have to go back in the middle of the day. However, you then start adding up the costs and the GHDs and the picture starts to look not so rosy. So when we take a look at infrastructure costs. In scenario one, remember it's a smaller battery pack, has come back to the depot to charge up in the middle of an eight-hour shift. So now you need those chargers, additional chargers that we noted. We noted you need four charging stations, dual heads, so they can charge uh vehicles multiply. You need central rectifiers and charging stations and installation labor and commissioning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So for the number of chargers you need for scenario one, it looks cheaper. Um so scenario two goes further, serves more people and just to remind you, requires fewer buses. But scenario one requires fewer chargers and costs less to install the chargers, about six hundred thousand dollars. In nominal dollars, I should say, because this drops to about half a million in net present value. I'll walk you through that in a moment. But about about six hundred sixty thousand dollars. In scenario two, because you need more chargers, bigger battery pack, they need to charge up uh further and faster in a shorter period of time. They deliver better service, but you need one point six million dollars worth of chargers. And remember, those bigger battery packs, to deliver that service, they charge at a hundred ten kilowatts, not at the forty five or ten to twenty kilowatts. They're at a higher power level, more expensive chargers, more expensive civil works. So there's a cost effect there. So now scenario two is starting to look a little bit more expensive from the infrastructure cost perspective. We're gonna show you the full economic picture uh and where you're landing, which is why in your situation, you don't have a perfect winning solution on electrification. You have a few options ahead and we're going to end by recommending there's a few additional analyses that have to happen before you kind of sink your cash or money into any one of these solutions. In scenario one, this is the hundred kilowatt hour battery pack, the twenty five footer. It's a bit small, carries a few fewer passengers. You need more buses to replace your current service. Your electricity consumption compared to gasoline is sixty two percent impro- it's an improvement in the cost. So in other words, scenario one drops your operational fuel cost by sixty two percent. That's great because electricity is cheaper than gasoline when it's put through an electric powertrain. In scenario two, the buses are heavier, so they eat up more energy per kilometer as we noted before. So you still save over gasoline on a per bus value, but it's only forty six percent. Okay, so these are still some good savings per bus uh and per vehicle type. Now let's look at the greenhouse gas emissions. What happens there? Well, in Alberta, you do have this scenario that it's a, you know, as an Albertan, I feel comfortable saying we have a pretty dirty grid uh in comparison to the rest of Canada. The rest of Canada, especially if we look at Manitoba, British Columbia, Ontario, Quebec, it's a relatively clean grid with a lot of hydro, nuclear, wind and solar um and minimal natural gas peaker plants. Of course, in Alberta, Saskatchewan, the Maritimes and none of it, we have challenging grids. So as the grid still has coal on it quite heavily and then a lot of natural gas as a backup, you could see where Alberta lands on the carbon intensity factor. So it is true that when you put an electric vehicle into a relatively dirtier grid, you're going to have longer tailpipe emissions. And for federal funding, you have to show not just the emissions out of the tailpipe, you have to show the whole picture. And uh when we show the whole picture, in Alberta's electricity generation system, we use the twenty twenty three values for carbon intensity factor. Here's what ends up happening. On your left-hand side, your gasoline, based on the supply chain that we map using the GHG uh tool that the federal government uh asks us to use as a standard tool, the operation of the bus produces about three thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Then if you look right, you'll see at the top, the light blue is infrastructure electricity. Uh so that's infrastructure electricity for turning on the lights at the facilities and those kinds of things. If you turn right or if you go right further, the yellow kind of yellowish color is infrastructure for heating and cooling. So something funny happens here, not so funny. In the base case, you've got the requirement for your six vehicles and you grow to eight with the spare ratio. That means you have uh so much gasoline that you're using, the blue bar. The yellow kind of puky color there, that is the emissions that you produce, heating the facility where those things are stored. And so that's a very large portion of the emissions pie. It's not just what's coming out of the tailpipe, it's where you actually store these things because they have to be heated or cooled or in in stored in the middle of winter and summer. And then you have additional electricity auxiliary costs um of emissions of turning on the lights and maintaining those facilities. We use the current facility that you have. If you go to a scenario one where you need fourteen BEBS, fourteen battery electric buses to replace the eight, your infrastructure heating and cooling emissions go up, so your blue goes down. It doesn't go down a huge amount because it's Alberta's grid. And I say that very poignantly because that bar usually drops to almost nothing in other provinces. So that's where a lot of transit agencies will focus, that it drops to almost nothing if you're in Hydro Quebec or Manitoba Hydro and you've got a waterfall to lean on. But we don't have waterfalls or at least not a lot of them in Alberta, so we don't have that to lean on. So you could see the blue bar drops, but not a huge amount because of the nature of the grid. But the yellow bar goes up because now you need a facility that's big enough for fourteen vehicles. And you have to heat a facility for fourteen vehicles. And those chargers, which means your heating bills go up, but on top of it, your heating emissions go up. So you're unfortunately, your scenario one, that's cheaper from a charging perspective, uh ends up actually being worse from a greenhouse gas emissions perspective, so much so that it's worse than just keeping your gasoline vehicles. So in that scenario, that's not a winner for you. Um scenario number two, if you go to the bigger battery packs and you, that means you have fewer replacement vehicles. It's a one-to-one, eight battery electric buses for the eight vehicles you have. You're storing roughly the same. Uh what you see there is a drop-off in emissions, but only marginally uh in terms of the electricity is still roughly the same emissions as your gasoline. Because of the nature of the grid, they use much more electricity. Uh those vehicles have large battery packs, they're using a lot of electricity and your grid has the profile that it has. So you're not seeing like a super win right out the door. And so your scenario two, which makes more sense from success rates, is very comparable in the greenhouse gas emissions landscape to your gasoline scenario. Uh and and that is interesting to know. Uh, and and that is interesting to know, uh, because it is very much dependent on your grid and your grid profile. That does mean though, as the grid gets cleaner, these bars start to drop. So that is important to note, like as the grid, and that's a provincial issue of course, is how to greenify and decarbonize the grid, and that's something all provinces are looking at. This does start to drop. Um, so that is critical to keep in your mind. Now, the final elements here are just looking at what the costs are, and we have seen lots of cities in transit and communities from Saskatoon to Moncton and Kodiak where the grid is also not green, particularly green. Um, but they're investing in electrification or hydrogen on the basis that eventually the grid will be green. So their ROI is based on the economics of the situation. And if we take a look at the economics of the situation in your scenario, it's not a super winner right away. Uh, because of the on-demand structure you have, it's fairly cost-effective to start with. So your base case scenario, the rolling stock, if you were to buy and own those assets yourselves, is about one point eight million over the thirteen years in net present value. If you compare it to battery electric buses in the same scenario, you've got the rolling stock, the battery replacement facility, electrification, the depot chargers, all of that added. You're looking at about roughly um six point three to seven point nine million to serve the same population of transit riders. So electrification is expensive. There's no getting around it, that's for sure. Uh, and we say that as believers in electrification, so it's pretty important that people have the information they need to not make erroneous procurements. Then if you look at the operations and maintenance, uh, the operations and maintenance stay relatively stable across gasoline and battery electric. In larger fleets, the operations go uh can go through the roof when you include labor. In your study, we did not include labor, and that is something that we do recommend you consider in a phase two study. In some scenarios, the labor cost of battery or hydrogen has flipped the scenario entirely, and where an agency might have thought of going battery, they're now thinking of hydrogen because the labor costs associated with one or the other. In the case of Colt, you don't have unionized overhead labor, which is pretty common in other transit agencies. Uh, so what will happen here is if you go to fixed route or you start introducing fixed route and you start having labor costs that you're carrying as a city, those labor costs are specific, there are specific labor costs to battery, electric and hydrogen. Uh, and in the battery electric world, in scenario one, you will have more drivers because you will have fourteen vehicles. In even in the Colt scenario where it's on-demand and outsourced, you have more drivers. Fourteen vehicles cannot be driven by the same number of uh drivers as you have driving six. So there will be more drivers, and so to achieve electrification, there are labor costs, they're not included here. Uh, so without labor costs, we already know your operations and maintenance stay relatively stable, but we expect them to grow if you include labor. And then you have some residual value after thirteen years. There are things you can sell off. So in the case of gasoline cars or vehicles, they basically lose their value. But you do have chargers. The chargers last twenty years uh very often, so they have residual value after thirteen years. And depending on the bus make and model, you have residual value in the battery pack. So what it does mean is after thirteen years, your total cost in that present value is about four point four million for gasoline. The equivalent service being delivered by battery electric with scenario one, the twenty-five footer, seven point two million. And scenario two, the much more successful, longer range, bigger battery pack is eight point six. If you throw in the federal money that's available right now, just for battery electric, but not for gasoline, not for natural gas, it's available for battery electric and hydrogen fuel cell electric, it does chop it to near parity in scenario one and about a million point four more expensive than gasoline. So this is where most agencies have landed on. Uh, they're moving forward now because the federal cash is available now. If that program disappears, and it is a heavily political program and it depends on the government in power. If that program does disappear, then your costs go back to this, to decarbonize. If that program remains or some version of it in a permanent transit fund, uh, where about fifty percent of your decarbonized assets and civil works and depot costs are offset, then it starts to look like whether you go scenario one or two, you're, it's almost the same cost as your gasoline. This does not include, in this scope, we did not include carbon pricing specifically. It's baked into predicted prices of the fuel, um, but there are additional carbon prices and carbon credits that can be calculated in a phase two. Carbon credits are the big one. Um, with these chargers that you have for scenario one or two, insofar as they're deployed at the depot or en route, we're currently working with the federal government to get them all recognized as carbon creditable. And if they're carbon creditable, well, then it means you're making, you know, eventually in a couple of years, a hundred bucks, a metric ton off the chargers being deployed. That would offset your cost further. So what I'd like to say is, um, right now, if you buy what's in the marketplace now and you don't get any federal money, it's very expensive to electrify and you need more space and you need chargers and you need more drivers. But if federal funding remains in some version, shape or form, or provincial funding takes its place and you do choose to decarbonize and you do choose to aggregate your your chargers in the future, already you can get almost a price parity in scenario one, although it's not including labor. And if you then look to use those carbon credits in the future, plus integrate the labor costs, which may well balance themselves out, you're starting to look at again, price parity roughly uh with gasoline vehicles that you have. And they're the, of course, they're the added social benefits of cleaner air. So there's all of those health benefits and social benefits. In your scenario though, you don't have a smoking gun win right now. Uh, now, I will conclude this piece by saying, uh, like we are strong believers in decarbonization, but one way to decarbonize is the primary way to get people out of cars. And so whether they are diesel or gasoline vehicles, an on-demand service, which is what you have already, is one of the best ways in the country to decarbonize transit. Uh, including fixed route really does work when you have the community demand for sure and the density, and it can and should be modeled out. But where you are now with on-demand services is a very smart move for greenhouse gas reductions. Um, so that is one good conclusion to walk away with. In the social analysis, and this is the final piece, we look at if you go down this pathway and you want to decarbonize because you believe the grid will get cleaner, you believe that funding will continue to exist. And I do believe transit funding federally in some way, shape or form will continue to exist. And you do believe that community would benefit from greener air and healthier vehicles for your drivers, et cetera. Um, then you may wanna know where your communities benefit the most from those higher-end technology vehicles. I should indicate that most studies that have um surveyed drivers have indicated that drivers prefer the electrified vehicles, as do riders over diesel or gasoline, and that's because they rumble less, they make less noise, there's no smog, it doesn't smell dirty. It's just, it's a dream, right? It's smooth and it's soft and it's nice to drive and everybody loves these electrified vehicles. So if you are going that way, uh, then you may wanna target some areas of your community. We looked at noise-sensitive areas, so that includes daycare, senior homes, hospitals, schools, homeless shelters. We looked at parts in Cochrane where your air pollution might be a lot higher than other parts. That's a bigger issue in large cities than it is in small towns, but it still exists. And then we looked at your communities where you have lower levels of average education. You might have higher levels of elderly and vulnerable population, or you may have economically disadvantaged, lower levels of household income. Not all towns and cities have all of this data, so this is the ideal. In the town, in the case of uh Cochrane, we were able to get a lot of the data, not all of the data. In the report, we do review what we were able to map, but in general, when you look at the Colt bus stops that you do have, these are the areas, you actually have quite a few downtown clustered virtual stops where Colt now goes. It goes and it stops and it picks people up and it drops people off, and they hit all of the check marks of social inequity. So that means these red dots, uh, and the downtown East End, Glenbow, Industrial, Riverview, West Valley, the the uh names listed on the right-hand table, those are areas where you have noise, you have sensitive senior homes or hospitals or schools or transit routes that serve those sensitive areas. You have homeless shelters or low-income housing, or you have higher levels of air pollution, or you have poor education, or you have low income. So that's basically the map of Cochrane in terms of social inequity, where your Colt system currently goes. Um, and therefore we, you know, in an on-demand scenario, there's less of a put your best vehicles on your poorest routes. In fixed route, there definitely is. You can definitely say these are the poorest communities, the most disadvantaged, the ones where you have single-parented homes. Uh, and the ones that need and rely on transit the most as part of their household economic security. So you could definitely pick and choose to send your best tech to the communities that need it most. In on-demand, in general, as long as you're you're servicing your downtown core, you're really servicing uh, a community that is in need. So that's what the social equity analysis shows. Um, in conclusion, what this shows is if we just look at the vehicles offered to you right now at twenty-five foot to thirty foot, you can see that tailpipe emissions right now, your gasoline is producing tailpipe emissions. It is polluting the air locally. Your BEBS would produce zero tailpipe emissions. However, when you include in the facilities and the production of coal on the grid and the burning of it and the use of natural gas on the grid, and it's being pumped into those vehicles from eight to fourteen vehicles in scenario two to one, you could see that your gasoline is currently producing about five thousand eight hundred fifty-one uh tons of CO2 equivalency. Um, what if you go to scenario one, it is battery electric, but your emissions actually go up because of those facilities we had noted before, and you have fourteen vehicles. So fourteen vehicles is fourteen manufactured battery electric buses. There are life cycle emissions associated with those vehicles, so your emissions actually go up. If you go to scenario two, your emissions go down by eight percent overall. But your costs are seven point one to eight point five million without federal funding. With the current federal funding, it would chop those in half. You start to look like parity with your gasoline case. Um, but you would need fourteen vehicles in the scenario one, you would need only eight in scenario two. So if you ask my advice today, I'd say if you had to do it, you'd go with scenario two, because it is uh the version that is going to get you the best range with the least amount of additional buses, which means you don't have the cost of drivers uh and the additional facility costs. So what I will say here is these are costs without facility and labor. If we add in the facility cost of housing extra vehicles for scenario one and the driver cost of driving more vehicles in scenario one, uh, I guarantee to you scenario two would be the cheaper of the two. And so that is a phase two study, and we've talked to your staff about potentially coming back to the table to do those analyses, which is becoming more and more standard in the transit world. Nobody really cared about those pieces two years ago. Now everybody cares about those pieces because this is not enough to make a huge procurement decision. Um, and to give you some concluding remarks on it, you know, you're talking about multiple millions of dollars. It it costs a lot of money. In some transit communities, you're talking about billions of dollars. Uh, if we look at Vancouver, Toronto or Montreal, you know, large systems with two thousand buses, their decarbonization that we've calculated is in some cases four billion dollars, and that's if everything goes right. Like if everything goes absolutely right, but their cost savings are massive. And their mission savings are massive because their buses right now are belching out diesel and they're operating twenty-four hours a day and they've got sardine capacity, like crush capacity on the buses. So the profile is very different. Electrification makes a ton of sense in those cases. And they're plugging into grids that are extremely clean. When you're looking at scenarios like this, the story just isn't obviously there for you on day one. Uh, and therefore the conclusion is, your agency, your team, your your ministry should probably wait a couple of years for technological advancements, look at investing in your Colt system and continue, I would suggest right now, with the facility and depot calculations. So you at least have an order of magnitude in your minds about what it would cost from a facility and labor perspective to do this all. Uh, so thank you very much. I know it's a lot of information, but we hope we've been able to add a bit of clarity to the situation of decarbonization.
Well, thank you very much uh for your presentation. Um, I certainly, that was very informative and very comprehensive. And I think I learned more in your presentation than I've ever understood before about the complexities of what this might look like. Um, so just saying that though, I will turn it over to my colleagues for questions. Uh, as per our evening tradition, council read over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it was a very informative presentation and uh I can't believe you got as much in as you did in the time you had. Um, just the the last comments you talked about uh about waiting in terms of uh the advancement of technology. Uh, can you repeat that again and what 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 specifically were you referring to? This may not be the optimal time for us to do that, given that the technology isn't as advanced as it needs to be or could be?
Uh, I think there's two things. One is um the technology and I do wanna like put a caveat around it. It's not that batteries are gonna get massively better. They're not. There's and you know, you will hear it and I'm often on panels on the news with people saying batteries are gonna get way better. No, for the manufacturing world of buses, they are hitting a manufacturing limit. So in the lab and research at universities, we can play with all kinds of chemistries. But what can actually be produced at a price point that cities and taxpayers can afford is starting to hit a capacity limit in terms of what bus manufacturers will include. So when we say tech is gonna advance, it's not gonna be that the battery is gonna be radically changed in the next five to ten years. There'll be some micro improvements. What is going to change over time is the number of players on the market. Um, it is very much a monopolistic market right now. So when we talk about these battery, uh, well, we talk about these bus manufacturing products, you have across these three scenarios, you have two manufacturers. Um, and in both cases, they're very, very low volume manufacturers, so you're paying boutique prices for basically handcrafted vehicles. In the case of forty-foot or sixty-foot buses for larger cities, you have two primary players in Canada, New Flyer Nova Bus. Again, mostly a duopoly, good manufacturers, but we are limited by manufacturing. So when we say technological advances, it means potentially entrance of new players in a competitive landscape or acquisition by the larger players of the small startups for greater volume. That's gonna play itself out. The second element within that is improved efficiencies onboard the vehicle. So while the battery might not change radically, what is changing radically is the software controls of how many electrons actually get into your propulsion. That will change. So you might get a lot more range out of the hundred kilowatt hour battery pack than you did before. Not because the chemistry revolutionized, but because the software revolutionized. Those can, they, those can, things could affect your deployments quite heavily. The other thing that could affect you quite heavily is the growth of the hydrogen supply chain. So hydrogen buses across all platforms are much more expensive than their battery electric bus equivalents because volume, because they're they're boutique, they're volume, you know, the volume pricing is so low, it's handcrafted. But now that there's hydrogen strategies in most provinces in the country, California's buying them, North America is going fully in transit coaching and truck into hydrogen, that may start to bring the price point down for shuttles. In which case, you're not looking at chargers and battery electric buses, you're looking at hydrogen vehicles that need a fuel tank full and they don't need to charge, so you eliminate all the charging equipment. Now, those are some of the things that could occur that could affect the technology piece. The second piece that could occur that could substantially help you, which is an unknown, federal funding right now around decarbonization is very much focused on the powertrain because they wanted to get folks to stop buying diesel buses that have a twenty-year life cycle, because it's very hard to decarbonize the country in twenty-year spans. So they focus on battery electric and hydrogen. Going forward into the future, there's not a good scientific case for ignoring renewable natural gas. It's a very good decarbonizing technology. It could work for you optimally, but you can't get funding for it. And so it's not included in this study right now. Uh, and there is no funding federally or right now provincially in most provinces for on-demand service expansion as a greenhouse gas reducing technology, and yet it should. So those are some of the business components that may alter at a policy level that could radically change your costs.
So that's a good segue. So the the second phase of this won't include any study on hydrogen?
It could, uh, and that is up up to you if you'd like us to. Um, there are not many shuttles of this size in hydrogen. In fact, yeah, none in production right now, pilot modes. We can hypothetically show what it would look like, and there are manufacturers of the fuel cell technology that will say it's possible to do. You will just struggle to actually buy it in the next five to ten years.
The two providers that you were talking about is not the one that Edmonton is suing right now, is it?
No, Edmonton procured um from Proterra. And Proterra was one of the startup companies that spun off of Tesla. It was a series of um engineers from Tesla that left Tesla and started Proterra. Yeah, and they were playing and they did deploy, and then they went bankrupt. Uh, and we did work with Proterra specifications. We modeled those vehicles out as well. Um, so the two players in Canada, Nova Bus New Flyer, they are Canadian-based, New Flyers in Winnipeg, and they own over eighty percent of the marketplace in North America across all buses. And Nova Bus is in Quebec and has been there for decades and decades, and it's part of Volvo Group internationally.
So the the other areas that I had concern about where you spoke about range and anxiety. Um, you didn't speak about battery safety, which I know has been a problem uh just by reading the news. Um, and you referred to energy management, that is, being able to get the most out of that battery cell. Um, can you just talk about a little bit about battery safety and and secondly, we were just talking about uh the procurement issues that are associated with all of this?
Yeah, for sure. Um, so I just wrote an op-ed on battery safety, actually. Uh, hopefully it'll get published this this week and I'll send it along. Um, it is a significant concern, and in a phase two of this study, if if staff and council would like it, we can add a review of the battery fires that have occurred in transit. Uh, it has been a longstanding issue. So the chemistries themselves, like with hydrogen explosively, they're safe in and of themselves when they are well manufactured. And they're manufactured in powertrains that are well-designed, that are well-maintained. But the big issue that's arising right now, e-scooters is a good example, is where there's more and more manufacturers entering the supply chain globally. And you're starting to get a drop-off in quality of manufacturing. And when you're talking about lithium ion and anodes and cathodes and things that have to work precisely right, um, poor and shoddy manufacturing results in poor cells that result in battery fires. You can also have one-offs. I mean, you can definitely have an established manufacturer have a problem with a battery and it takes all of one cell that run, that has a thermal runaway event and it lights the rest of the cells essentially on fire, starts a chemical reaction. And the issue with battery fires is you can't put them out. You have to let them burn out. So the big overall issue is the transit world and fleets are entering into. It's not just buses, coach and vans, it's also trucks. Where you have a whole bunch of batteries lined up next to each other, is that once one starts on fire and you have all of a few minutes before toxicity means you cannot remove the vehicle. It's not safe to get in the vehicle and try to move it. It's not safe to get in the vehicle and try to move it, you just have to walk away. Uh, the concern is it will light the rest of the ones on fire. So how much spacing do you need between? That is an emerging issue. We have looked, as I said, at you'll need fourteen buses in scenario one to replace the eight buses. You need space for fourteen. An emerging standard is but how much space should be between them to prevent fires? And if it's double the space that is currently, you actually need space for twenty-eight vehicles to be safe. And I wish I had like a clear answer for you. Um, I can tell you there's a lot of research happening. There's a lot of standards right now happening. There's a lot of emergency response learnings on how you suppress a fire once it starts. And there are new systems emerging that early detect. And the way that you early detect a battery fire is through the gas it emits. So the so sooner you detect that gas with a sensor onboard, the sooner you can remove that vehicle from the rest. That's what's happening right now, but it is a bit of a wild west. And unfortunately, hydrogen doesn't get away from the problem because in North America, hydrogen vehicles are battery dominant vehicles. So you put the hydrogen in the tank, the hydrogen does not power the vehicle. It goes into a fuel cell, that fuel cell powers the battery, the battery powers the vehicle. So it's an electric vehicle with a range extender. You still have a battery onboard. Um, so it's an emerging area. It is something to consider and it's definitely in procurement. And this is a segue to your second question. Something that we encourage transit agencies and cities to put into their procurements. Uh, their requirements for battery uh safety, their requirements for battery maintenance and support and monitoring. Because you have telematics at every level of these electronic equipment, unlike anything in the gasoline and diesel world. You know, we were not putting microloggers on tanks of diesel in the past, but we are on batteries and and powertrains. So you can do all of that. And then you have to have really good operations and maintenance that are checking the batteries and the battery degradation and the performance regularly.
And then the last thing we're coming on that was uh the mission of your organization is to is to is greener and cleaner transportation, full stop, right?
Sorry, the mission is to give a clearer presentation?
Of your organization?
Oh, if you want, okay, sorry. I thought you had said our mission was to give you a better presentation today. So apologies if it was unclear. Uh, yes, our our organization QTRIC was created eight years ago now um as a nonprofit, is a technology nonprofit. Is specific to the public transit and public fleet world. And as a nonprofit, all of our members are cities, transit agencies like your own um and the industry manufacturers that make this stuff and the public utilities that are providing the power of the future and a whole bunch of academic universities. And our job is twofold. One, we do nonprofit consulting for government so that we to we have these tools and these algorithms we developed and models. And we use the exact same tools and the exact same models for all the agencies so that the federal and provincial governments and cities know that a vehicle modeled in Cochrane is the same as a vehicle modeled in Victoria and the same as a vehicle in Quebec City. And then the second thing we do is once agencies are ready to start, generally you're not ready to go buy ten or twenty right off the bat on your own. You might wanna do a pilot with a few other partners. And we put together the pilots with the manufacturers and the electrical partners and then we monitor the pilots. So we do a lot of pilot demonstrations and we do all the modeling work.
Yeah, I was just reading from your mission statement, basically says you're so that you're looking for green and uh cleaner and green transportation.
Correct, yeah. It's basically to get rid of cars and advance public transit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, uh, councillor Flowers, over to you.
Well, there's a lot of things to sort out. Doesn't sound like we should rush into it anytime soon. Um, we're also, we need to expand our service and figure out what kind of service we are gonna give to Cochrane residents before we make too many changes. Just a couple of questions of the from the report. I tried to skim through a hundred and thirty-one pages, but it was a lot of information and new to me. Um, I saw that Rome Bus in Banff had a target of ten electric buses by last year. Do you know if they were able to?
I believe they are delayed. Uh, and in fact, that's one of the updates in our current report that's going to, which is why we asked for the report to be pulled. It's a penultimate version. I believe they are delayed and I'm sure I'm thinking, Mohammed, did you get an update from Rome? On their deployment, I think they're delayed, but we'll double check with you on their procurement.
Thank you. And um there was something about scoring the bus stops. Some were higher than others on page thirteen. I just wondered if you could speak to what that was about.
Yes, and I believe that may have been the social analytics. Let me just double check page thirteen. Do you know which paragraph you're referring to on page thirteen?
Maybe it wasn't page thirteen because that doesn't look like the right page. Um, I was just curious of what it meant, but.
Oh, yes, well, we do score the bus stops um according to the social equity. So there was this scoring and in the report, uh, in detail, all of these red bubbles are scored by priority. So in the appendix material that we shared um in in the confidential report, it does score all of these stops according to the social equity measure, which means basically if you send a vehicle there, you're doing better social good than if you send a vehicle over there because there's more likelihood that you're serving somebody who has low income, a single parent, has a lower education and really, really needs that transit service more than somebody in community X that may be richer and better off and more privileged. So that's how we scored your stops.
I see, that makes sense. Thank you for all the information.
Thank you.
Councillor Nagel.
I was just curious on the topic of hydrogen. Um, do you actually think that we're gonna have commercially viable hydrogen vehicles in the next decade?
Oh, I hope in the next ten months, uh, because for seven months, I'm sorry, I should say Deputy Mayor through the chair to the councillor. Um, we have been trying to get a hydrogen fuel cell bus project out the door in Mississauga now for about seven years. Um, with ten fuel cell buses uh provided by New Flyer in Canada and by by Ballard Fuel Cell Stacks in British Columbia with Enbridge Natural Gas producing green hydrogen off the grid. Uh, so all the pieces have lined up in that project and we're just in the final stages of getting some provincial funding. But the big component there again, high upfront capital costs, there isn't a lot of green hydrogen. It could be produced because we have a lot of green electricity in Canada, but we don't have a lot of production right now. And then even once you produce it, you have to put it on a trailer to ship it. There's no supply chain. It's essentially where we were with natural gas decades ago when there weren't the supply chain, the pipelines, the storage and the distribution. So it will happen and I would say it has to happen because in so many of the agencies we model, not yours, but the larger ones, as soon as you're looking at like four hundred to five hundred buses and higher, which is the big cities in Canada, um, not just Toronto, Montreal, Vancouver, but Winnipeg, Calgary, Edmonton, and on we go. All of those agencies, when we do the modeling for them, their failure rates with battery electric are so high in so much of their blocks um that they would have to have lots of lots of very expensive one million dollar high power chargers, lots and lots of additional buses and drivers, like to overcome the limits of the battery, they'd have to have quadrupled the price in some cases for a portion of their fleet. A portion of their fleet, easy peasy to electrify with battery electric and then a portion, very hard. And the way to electrify it is with hydrogen. Um, so there's a clear case use, there's a clear demand. And now most significant utilities in the country are starting to look at hydrogen production as part of their production method. In Alberta, there's a hydrogen hub, there's a hydrogen strategy, there's industrial money behind it. There's a long way to go in the distribution of it, but it is certainly the kind of product that is readily available in its gray form. Uh, decarbonizing it to a green or blue form is gonna take some effort, but as an energy system alternative, it has the biggest energy bank for its buck compared to batteries.
That's very interesting, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Excellent, yeah, I don't see any more questions, but uh, yeah, thank you again for a very informative presentation. You've certainly given me lots to think about. Um, and I'm sure I'll have a thousand questions tomorrow. Uh, but for tonight, um, on behalf of council, thank you very much for your presentation and we may see you again. Thank you and have a great day.
And thank you Deputy Mayor. And I would just ask, um, if you haven't read the detailed report yet, don't because we're about to send you a better one in a few minutes, so thanks very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, on to item five C. Uh, our manager, Michelle Delorme, Community Service, is going to be presenting on the Parks Recreation and Community Culture Plan. We are keeping you busy tonight.
Yes, good evening. Alright, so I'm thrilled to be here this evening um to discuss the plans to rejuvenate Cochrane's Parks, Recreation and Cultural Spaces. We're updating our Parks and Open Spaces Master Plan from two thousand and twelve and the Parks Recreation and Culture Facilities Master Plan from two thousand and eight to serve our community better. This evening, I will provide an update on three key planning projects. The Parks Recreation and Community Culture Master Plan, the Connectivity Plan and the Bow River Strategy. These initiatives aim to create interconnected spaces that promote recreation, culture, community art and our beloved parks and open spaces. We're also prioritizing the River Access Impact Study, formerly recognized in the budget as the Water Course Strategy and the Washroom Strategy to improve accessibility and amenities within our recreational areas. So for to bring all the pieces together from the two thousand and twenty-three and to two thousand and twenty-six budget, initially, these projects were separated out into Community Services Needs Assessment, the Parks and Open Spaces Needs Assessment and a larger Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan. These projects have been approved through the recent budget approval to move forward as one, forming a cohesive Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan. The decision to merge these efforts stems from recognizing interconnected needs across these domains and ensuring a holistic approach to our community's development. So the master plan isn't about checking boxes. It's about laying the groundwork for the next fifteen years. It provides clear direction and priority guiding us through the intricate landscape of Cochrane's Parks, Recreation and Cultural Systems. With these insights, we can ensure our our efforts are targeted and impactful, meeting the diverse needs of our community head on. Moreover, the needs assessment serves as a diagnostic tool enabling us to analyze and identify opportunities and deficiencies in our recreational and cultural services. By pinpointing areas for improvement, we can allocate our resources strategically, ensuring every investment enhances the well-being of our residents. At the heart of this master plan is a robust community engagement that we under and we understand the true essence lies within its people. Therefore, uh, we are dedicated to fostering robust dialogue and collaboration, ensuring that the voices of our residents shape the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan. As we delve into this project, emerging trends will be identified. We by staying ahead of the curve, we can adapt our strategies to meet our community's evolving needs and aspirations, ensuring our initiatives remain relevant and effective for years to come. Furthermore, this plan will guide us in developing policies that support our vision for a vibrant and inclusive community by laying down a solid policy framework. We can implement our initiative our initiatives smoothly and sustainably. Lastly, we'll align our cultural opportunities with council strategic objectives, defining what culture truly means in the context of Cochrane. By doing so, we'll create a cultural landscape that reflects our community's diversity and celebrates our own unique identity. Not only does Recreation, Parks and Community Culture Master Plans serve as the foundational step in our journey towards a brighter and more vibrant Cochrane, it provides us with invaluable insights into our community's needs, aspirations and priorities, shaping the direction of our planning efforts for years to come. However, it's crucial to recognize that this master plan is not an isolated endeavor. Rather, it's intricately woven into the broader tapestry of initiatives to enhance our community's well-being. The Bow River Strategy and the Connectivity Plan and the Washroom Strategy are all integral components um that will complement and enrich the master plan. By incorporating these strategies as appendices, we ensure that our planning efforts are cohesive and comprehensive, considering our community's diverse needs. This holistic approach allows us to look at our whole community, considering factors such as connectivity, accessibility and infrastructure alongside our parks, recreation and cultural offerings. The Recreation, Parks and and Culture Master Plan lays the groundwork for a vibrant Cochrane, but it's through the integration of the complementary strategies like the Bow River Strategy, the Connectivity Plan and the Washroom Strategy that we truly create a community where every resident can thrive. So the Bow River Strategy is a comprehensive initiative to enhance our community's connection with the iconic Bow River and its surrounding areas. This strategy addresses many aspects, ensuring an integrated approach to our planning efforts. Stage one will lay the groundwork for future enhancements and includes conducting a thorough background review to understand the historical context and existing conditions along the Bow River. We will also engage internally to gather insights and perspectives from key stakeholders within our organization. Stage two will focus uh will shift our focus to implementation, phasing and recommendations to ensure that the suggestions are executed strategically and efficiently. Preliminary cost estimates will be generated to clarify the financial aspects of and of the future proposed projects. Ultimately, the Bow River Strategy aims to identify future opportunities and inform improvements along the Bow River pathway. Stretching from Cochrane's boundary, western and eastern limits, we also will also be reviewing the regional pathway connections, including integrations with initiatives like the trail to ensure seamless connectivity within our pathway network. The River Access Impact Study identifies informal and formal access points along the Bow River. It comprehensively assesses all existing access locations to determine their environmental alignment with ongoing development or potential rehabilitation efforts. The study critically evaluates these access points, providing essential insights into the environmental considerations and their alignment with broader development plans, particularly within the Bow River Strategy framework. Furthermore, the study contributes valuable technical and background information to the Bow River Strategy, offering the insights into potential ecological impacts and identifying suitable locations for further development or enhancement initiatives. The River Access Impact Study is pivotal in informing decision-making processes, ensuring that future development and rehabilitation efforts along the Bow River are environmentally sustainable and aligned with community objectives. So in Cochrane, pathways serve as vital arteries for pedestrians and cyclists, offering accessible and well-maintained routes integrated into the active transportation system. These paved corridors ensure safe and convenient travel throughout the community, catering to various multimodal forms of transportation and accommodating activities like community commuting, recreational walks and fitness pursuits. In contrast, Cochrane's trails are characterized by natural surfaces typically composed of dirt or shale. Unlike pathways, trails may not be accessible to all users and are not maintained year round. Instead, they are primarily designated for recreational purposes, providing hiking, mountain biking and nail nail nature exploration opportunities to diverse landscapes, including parks and environmental reserves um and scenic viewpoints. Cochrane's trails allow residents and visitors to connect with nature and indulge in outdoor activities within a rugged setting. These distinctions underscore Cochrane's commitment to providing diverse recreational opportunities tailored to different user preferences. The Connectivity Plan will support the enhancement of Cochrane's recreational infrastructure by standardizing trail development and mapping existing pathways and trails while prioritizing future connections. By establishing a clear guidelines for trail development and providing comprehensive direction informed by community input, the plan aims to create a more connected and accessible community, ensuring that residents and visitors can enjoy a variety of outdoor experiences tailored to their interests and preferences. The Washroom Strategy aims to identify standards, service levels and future capital needs for public washrooms in parks and open spaces. This comprehensive strategy aims to enhance community amenities by establishing clear guidelines for providing public washroom facilities. Through the Washroom Strategy, standards will be developed to ensure the public washrooms meet the needs of park visitors while adhering to quality and accessibility requirements. This includes considerations such as the number of facilities needed, their location within parks, maintenance standards and accessibility features. Moreover, the strategy will assess future capital needs for developing and maintaining public washrooms by identifying investment requirements. The Washroom Strategy will enable proactive planning and budget allocation to ensure that public facilities continue to meet Cochrane's needs. The Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan will commence alongside the Connectivity Plan and the River Access Strategy will inform the Bow River Strategy. Sorry, the River Access Study will inform the Bow River Strategy, ensuring alignment with environmental considerations and development plans. At the same time, the Washroom Strategy will independently address public facility needs. Notably, the Bow River Strategy, Connectivity Plan and Washroom Strategy will serve as an appendices to the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan, enriching its scope and ensuring cohesive planning across all facets of community development. The Jim Offelman Study and the River Access Study will play integral roles in shaping the Bow River Strategy development to ensure it receives informed guidance. In April, administration will bring forward a proposed recommendation to integrate the River Access Study into the current year's budget. By incorporating findings from these studies, the the Bow River Strategy will be well-equipped to address environmental considerations. to address environmental considerations and effectively align with future development plans. Administration has devised a comprehensive strategy for communicating these plans, emphasizing robust community engagement through channels such as the Connecting Cochrane website, community events, and involvement with committees like the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Sport and Rec the Sport and Recreation Interagency. Residents will have opportunities to stay informed and provide feedback. Additionally, regular updates with will be provided to council, ensuring transparency and accountability throughout the process. By leveraging these diverse communication channels, administration is aiming to foster meaningful dialogue and ensure that the community's voice is heard in shaping the future of Cochrane's parks, recreation, and cultural initiatives. So closely aligned with council strategic objectives, or sorry, these projects are closely aligned with council strategic objectives across multiple fronts. These plans will outline diverse recreational and cultural opportunities, encourage active lifestyles, and foster community cohesion, thereby enriching our residents' overall quality of life. They will support initiatives to attract visitors, bolster local businesses in the recreation and cultural sectors, and stimulate economic activity through strategic infrastructure development. Pursuing preserving cultural assets, celebrating local traditions, and strengthening residents' bonds with their community will reinforce Cochrane's unique identity. Prioritizing the maintenance and expansion of our parks, trails, and natural areas will promote access to nature and uphold environmental stewardship. Championing urban design standards and infrastructure improvements that enhance both functionality and aesthetics, creating spaces that are not only practical but also visually appealing. Furthermore, these plans will improve accessibility and foster greater social interaction within our community by providing safe transportation options and encouraging active modes of travel. And that is everything. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Lormans. Much appreciated. I think we get to start with Council Reed again with our first question. Over to you.
Yeah, I want to begin by saying I think the I think the Parks, Recreation, and Community Cultural Plan is brilliant. My biggest concern is that with with the plan, the cultural plan and all of its components, it's a huge undertaking, and I'm very ambitious on the timelines that we've got. I guess so my question is, is it realistic? I mean, you know, do you have the have we got the appropriate budget, assuming we provide this additional funds? Have we got the associated staff? Have we resources to meet the timelines? For me, I would rather, you know, you know, it's kind of under promise, over deliver kind of situation, right? I would rather have you take the time you need, have the resources available to you, and and do it right than have coming back to council in six months and saying, whoops, I I need an extra six months, I need two more resources. I think for me, part of the challenge with if we go back to the earlier part of the agenda, whether talking about the audit, and I think we were just simply unresourced in that area, and that accounted for some of the issues we've got, and I would hate for this to fall in that same vein. And so I'm just curious, I know it again, it's a really ambitious project, I think it's brilliant, I'm I'm a hundred percent behind it. But is it realistic in terms of the timelines that you set out?
Through the chair. Thank you. That's an excellent question. We're actually getting ready to tender the the culture, Parks, Recreation, and Culture Master Plan. So what that will look like is we'll actually have a contractor build out this plan and do the needs assessment. And the same thing for the Connectivity Plan and the Bow River Strategy. So there will be contractors that will be doing all of this work and building the master plans and putting all of the planning together. From administration support will be supporting them and doing the community engagement and supporting all of those initiatives in each step, bringing together all of the community groups so that we can ensure that the needs assessment is properly completed. As for a budget, there was a budget approval of the six hundred and fifty thousand at the beginning of March for the master plan. I'll be coming back in April asking, so the River Access Study was allocated in two thousand and twenty-five, and that's forty thousand dollars. So in April, I'll be coming back and asking for forty thousand dollars to be moved into two thousand and twenty-four so that we can complete the River Access Study, and that will also be completed by a contractor.
Yeah, that was understood, I guess. I just concerned about it with even with all the contractors, the public engagement we've done in the past has gone way beyond, at least in some other projects have gone way beyond what it was anticipated. If you think you can do it, I all the power to you, but as I say, I think the plan's brilliant.
Yes, speaking with other communities and how they've laid out their their different plans, they have said that there's about eighteen months for this this type of plan. So typically, you would only have one plan at a time, but we are hoping that the contractor, we can find a contractor to do the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Master Plan and the Connectivity Plan together so that we can kind of tie those together. We do have urban systems supporting us with the Bow River Strategy and the the Future River Access Strategy because they're closely tied to all of the work that's happening within the town, but also the trail project as well. So they have a fairly holistic view of what is happening along the Bow River, and they can support us there.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Nagel.
Yeah, I'm happy to be discussing this here this evening. Will these plans result in like firm actionable items and recommendations in the form of capital projects and policy changes?
Yeah, through the chair to Council Nagel, yes, they absolutely they will. They'll help us prioritize as well. So through the needs assessment, we'll understand what the community is needing, we'll also understand what those future trends look like. We know that Edmonton and Calgary, as an example, they're now having to change fields over to cricket fields because that's the new trend coming up. So our hope is that we're actually getting an understanding of what is happening in Cochrane and what the community would like to see, and making sure that we're prioritizing based on what is happening. And it will also give us an idea of what potential trends are coming up so that we're able to plan for that.
Yeah, so for me, like what success looks like with this is if we have a number of firm, actionable capital projects, policies, I'll be very excited to see that. For me, what failure looks like if this becomes one of these things that just becomes a huge written report full of overarching principles and like interesting ideas, but it just kind of it's like three hundred pages of really intelligent work that nobody ever reads. And so I really hope we can do, you know, bring something really tangible forward out of all this that we can get behind and and make happen. So thank you, though.
Excellent. Council Flowers.
So my question is around what can we do pieces of it, or are we waiting till the end of two thousand and twenty-five before we actually do any of the work?
So the the stepped process would be hiring the contractor, we're going to be putting the RFP out to tender. And then once the contractor is hired, they are going to launch into an evaluation of the current landscape of the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural landscape within Cochrane. Then they're going to connect with community groups and do through community engagement, do a needs assessment of the community. And so the goal would be to have that all completed by the end of this year so that they can start evaluating what do we currently have from a policy standpoint, from a need standpoint, and start building out what that plan should really look like.
So we might do some of the work in two thousand and twenty-five, or some of the projects?
Part of the project will be completed in two thousand and twenty-five. The goal is to have a master plan document ready by the end of two thousand and twenty-five to present.
So will we still move forward with like some of the ideas that came out of the Jim Offelman Park, or does it all get shelved until the rest of this work is done?
No, I know that the Parks Team is working on looking at those priorities that Jim Offelman had provided as well.
Oh, good. And the grant that we got for the Glenbow Path. I was walking on there today, and it's such a mess with ice and flooding, and it's a terrible mess right now, so we don't have to wait forever for that.
Yeah, we'll be bringing forward an update on the on that pathway in April as well.
Oh, good. And so when you mentioned culture, are you talking about arts and culture building too? That's going to be part of it?
We're going to be evaluating the the cultural landscape and what are the needs. So culture can look different to everyone. Cochrane is known for its western heritage, and that would be part of culture, but we also know that there's diverse backgrounds that are moving into Cochrane, so we need to be considering what does that look like and how does everyone feel like they belong?
There'll be new information for sure, but we've done some studies in the past that did get shelved. So we'll have to look at those two and make sure that we incorporate some of the feedback that we've heard in the past as well.
Part of the beginning stages of this project is to actually evaluate what we currently have so that we can understand where are we at and then where do we need to go.
Huge project. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, Mr. Lormans, I just want to applaud you and your team for for the work that you've done and really providing momentum into the Parks, Recreation, and Culture space. I think this council did a great job, has done a great job in really driving the transportation piece, but Parks, Recreation, and Culture is the next gap that our growing community needs to fill. And so I really appreciate the strategy of of kind of coming up with the strategy in one fell swoop. And I know it's a big investment in in finances and time to do it, but I think the sooner we can get a plan mapped out, the sooner we can start defining those actionable items that Council Nagel was 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 calling out the need for. And and I echo that the last thing I think any of us want is more shelf art. We do want those actionable priorities, those actionable projects. And so for myself, what I'm looking forward to getting out of this is that that clear needs assessment so that when council is looking at what we want to invest taxpayer dollars in, we can see where the needs are and make sure that we're responding to the actual needs and not necessarily the the best lobby group of the day. So I'm really looking forward to that piece. I mean, I fully expect, you know, we need we need more ice. Pickleball should be happy this year, I think. But, you know, trails and swimming and past due for baseball and softball and all the field sports. So I'm really looking forward that we're taking this a sort of step towards determining what our true needs are so we can start making those smart investments. So I really applaud this and look forward to the work that is being done here. So I guess be on behalf of council, thank you for your work to this point, and I imagine we'll be thanking you lots in a year from now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, onward. So now we're on to item five D, the Community Growth Year-End Report, two thousand and twenty-three. Mark Krasinski.
Good evening, W. Mayor and members of council. In September of last year, Community Growth introduced an approach to periodic mid-year and annual reporting. At that meeting, we committed to return to council in Q one and Q three of each year to present our year-end and mid-year reports respectively. This report aligns with the concept of the concept and approach of results-based accountability that you have seen previously in September. It really goes through the essentially follows the principles of turning the curve and continual improvement, as well as focusing on the most important data as it relates to how much, how well, is anyone better off? The intent is to avoid drowning the message in a sea of different data, metrics and graphs, by focusing on the metrics that are most important and those in those key areas of how much, how well, is anyone better off? So I'm joined today by Nicole Tomes, Acting Manager of Planning Services, and Justin Perrin, Manager of Safety Codes. I'm going to hand it off over to them, they're going to walk you through essentially the annual reports for two thousand and twenty-three in their respective departments, and I'll be speaking to business development, and then will be some time for questions at the end. Nicole?
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Deputy Worship and Counsel. Since you've seen this once already before, I'm going to jump into the updated statistics and what's new. This graph includes the number of compliance certificates and development permits over the last three years. For two thousand and twenty-three, we finished the year with six hundred and seventy-one compliances and hundred and seventy, or sorry, a hundred and eighty-seven development permit applications. Compliances were down twenty percent from last year and back to a normal ten-year average amount. Development permits were up by six point nine percent and just slightly above the ten-year average. I will talk more about the details of development permits in the Development Summary Report, but there were significant number of non-residential permits and accessory suites applications for the last year. And how well did we do those applications? Well, for development permits, there are target timelines in the Municipal Government Act. The first line at twenty represents the twenty days that we have to deem an application complete, which we were able to reduce from last year, and the second line is the cumulative forty days for a total of sixty days for an application, and thus represents what the amount of time that we have to make a decision, which on average, we we do for seventy-three percent of the time, and we're able to reduce that from last year to below further below the sixty-day limit. And in all of that, is anyone better off for doing it? This graph depicts the number of dwelling units applied for by month. Both single and semi-detached are represented by subdivisions and multi-unit developments, including apartment buildings, townhomes, and suites. And in two thousand and twenty-three, due to the focus on the housing crisis, we have been tracking the numbers of these units applied for each month for a total of one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven units for the year that have been enabled by the planning process. Some of the accomplishments of the Planning Services Department for two thousand and twenty-three include the implementation of the Western Heritage Design Framework, it was nominated for a planning award and was adopted in December of two thousand and twenty-two, so this was the first year of its full implementation. We also completed the first annual review of the Land Use Bylaw and associated amendments. We were we presented the draft growth study to council in the fall to inform the update on the Envision Cochrane two thousand and fifty project and completed the phase one engagement of the same project back in the fall, which was great. And of course, the reason we are here this evening, we have implemented results-based accountability reporting in the last year. Emerging risks for the Planning Services Department is that we have business continuity and service line sustainability risks that are increasing. Last year, we experienced two waves of resourcing challenges. One was mid-year, and we were able to address that. And the second was unforeseen and emerged at the end of the year, and we are still kind of recovering from that one. There have been a significant increase in secondary suite applications from last year and this year, actually, as well as council reports have more than doubled over the last three years, as shown on this graph. This represents a generalized increase in volume and applications and directly relates to the amount of work the applications involve. In addition, there are more developer-led, front-ended infrastructure projects coming up in order to keep up with the pace of development. And in general, those take more time to negotiate agreements for and that sort of thing. So looking forward, looking into this year, we have the Envision Cochrane two thousand and fifty project, which is on schedule and on budget. We are completing the phase two of engagement actually today, and that will be coming back to you shortly for what we heard. And then we will be moving on to draft policy for that project in the Q two, Q three of this year. The Rolling Trails Area Redevelopment Plan, which just received second reading, is going through the Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board of the CMRB Plan Review Process, and it's anticipated that we'll be able to bring that back toward to council before the summer for third reading. We are also happy to say that we have completed recruitment and selection for a new Planning Services Manager who is starting in April. And lastly, there are some items that are coming to council to a council agenda near you for consideration, including land use applications and neighborhood plan applications and area structure plan amendments in Greystone, Westhawk, South Bow, and the Willows of Riverside. Like I said, the Engagement Cochrane, or sorry, Envision Cochrane, what we heard report for the Engagement Phase Two will be coming back to you. There'll be amendment to the Southridge Area Structure Plan for the John Robinson lands. The Community Enhancement Evaluation will be coming to you in Q two. We will again be doing our annual periodic review of the Land Use Bylaw, as well as hopefully presenting the final version of the growth study for you. And that concludes my section. Please welcome Justin Perrin, Manager of Safety Codes, to take you through the next few slides.
Thanks, Nicole. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. Just to add to Planning's presentation and continue the Community Growth's presentation, I'm here to update you guys on the safety codes. The number of permits that was was slightly down from previous years, but we completed over just over ten thousand inspections last year. And of those ten thousand inspections, nine hundred and eighty-eight were re-inspections due to identified code infractions or life safety issues that were identified and then confirmed corrected. Or life safety uh issues that were identified and then confirmed corrected. Um while the chart here shows that we had five FTE positions at the end of this year. It has to be noted that we experienced a number of staff departures to surrounding municipalities. Where we fluctuated down to a minimum of three FTEs for an extended period of time. Uh while we recruited the vacant positions um throughout twenty twenty-three. We were able to attain our Quality Management Plan Compliance Target of ninety-five percent. The QMP Quality Management Plan sets our level of service for inspection bookings, permit issuance. Number of inspections and required documentation that relate to code compliance monitoring and in a as an accredited municipality. Uh by the Safety Codes Council. Due to difficulties attracting qualified candidates throughout twenty twenty-three, uh we were successful in fulfilling those vacant roles. Uh we worked collaboratively with our um uh HR department, but um. It increased our reliance on contract service for inspection support through um to maintain our service levels and to continue our QMP compliance. The contract cost increased by a hundred and forty thousand dollars or up a hundred and thirty-eight percent compared to twenty twenty-two. And up around three hundred percent since twenty twenty-one. This reduced our surplus and associated contributions to reserve. The increase in contract service was to aid in only one discipline out of the four disciplines that we inspect here within the town of Cochrane. Um and it was only the building discipline was covered last year for the most part. For about three to four days uh while we were fluctuating with our full-time positions and and recruitment. So to address the business continuity risk um related to attracting qualified candidates. We collaboratively worked with our HR business partner to develop an uh recruitment and retention strategy. And we were successful in filling those vacant roles uh by the end of twenty twenty-three. We added in also an additional contract service uh provider, all while maintaining our Quality Management Plan uh target percentage. We implemented the updated, also we updated our QMP in twenty twenty-four as well. Um as an accredited organization. We have to keep this Quality Management Plan updated every four years and that is a cycle that we work with the Safety Codes Council on. To ensure that we're updating that Quality Management Plan every four years to ensure we're compliant with our accreditation. So of the five hundred and ten dwelling permits uh issued last year, uh two hundred and ninety-four were single-family dwellings. Thirty-two were secondary suites, hundred and thirty-five were semi-detached dwellings and forty-nine were multifamily units. When it comes to emerging risks, the business continuity risk is still something that we need to be as proactive as we can. By focusing on recruitment of future roles and retention of existing staff. We are legislated to provide uh and maintain for years to come so we can provide the QMP compliance. And ensure that we're in uh continuity to our uh enforcement here within the town. Although we have made progress in reducing the risk to business continuity, there's still a long road ahead. Recruitment in twenty twenty-three was based solely on filling vacant roles. And we are looking to continue to recruit new positions to support the increase in workload. So as we look ahead in twenty twenty-four, um we're looking at updating our permit software later this year. It will increase our efficiency efficiency of our permitting and inspection process. And once the full implementation of our recruitment strategy is achieved, it will allow for more capacity. And the ability to provide code enforcement education initiatives to reduce the number of re-inspections. And also increase the amount of permit applications. I want to thank you for your time tonight and I'll uh relay this back to Mark for the business development update.
Thank you, Justin. So as we're in the process of preparing recruitment and selection of a new manager of business development, I'll be presenting twenty twenty-three annual report for business development. This slide shows uh year-over-year increases in business licenses from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. The number of business licenses in twenty twenty-three increased by approximately fifty-nine or two point eight percent. This demonstrates continued growth in the number of businesses operating in Cochrane. This slide is really just demonstrating utilization of existing or of the boardrooms that were added to uh the station uh and how they're being utilized. Uh predominantly uh internal at this point, but external members such as our partners in Cochrane Tourism, Cochrane Chamber of Commerce. And other nonprofits in the community that are seeking uh spaces to uh either advance their business or discuss nonprofit um issues that they need to uh convene for. Is anyone better off? Over the course of twenty twenty-three, this slide identifies how business development brought the Business Incubator Program to life. Onboarding our first founder in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Um that led to bringing on six founders uh throughout the entire year. Hiring a program manager to lead the incubator program that now includes Smart Start and uh the initiation of important work to identify. And attract mentors and other programming such as Founder Round Tables, Expert Sessions and Entrepreneurs in Residence. Most certainly, most recently, some uh sessions on uh on uh artificial intelligence as well. And uh how to effectively use ChatGPT to help advance and grow your business. So a big thank you to our partners in Innovate Cochrane as we work with them. Our accomplishments this year, again, it predominantly focuses on the main feature, which was the Business Incubator and developing and implementing and really activating the station. So a program manager was hired for the incubator. Uh with our partners of Innovate Cochrane, we applied for grant funding through Praise Can. Uh the Business Incubator uh has grown now to eight founders with two additional ones added this year. We established founder programming, including weekly Founder Round Tables, bi-weekly expert sessions, bi-weekly one-on-one milestone reviews. And with Smart Start, uh again mentioning that will be launching here soon, so it's a little bit looking to the future. We also, of course, implemented periodic results-based accountability reporting, which we are here, we're talking about today. Developed strategic partnerships with Garmin, X Y Z and Bold Architects, as well as post-secondary collaboration with. The Southern Alberta Institute of Technology and University of Calgary's Urban Design School, uh as well as host of the Deputy Minister uh for Praise Can. Emerging risks, uh theme of business continuity and service line resilience, as well as safety incident reports that are emerging uh at the station. And the outlook for twenty twenty-four is, again, business continuity, which is a theme uh for community growth. Is one of the risks we try and mitigate is one of my uh three uh primary objectives in twenty twenty-four. Uh we have recruitment and selection of a manager of development, uh applying business development that we're currently underway. We want, really want to use this as an opportunity to review and update our strategy as well. Uh and evaluate both of the job description and once we bring in a new manager. To reevaluate our business and economic development strategy, as well as our Cochrane Tourism Strategy. Uh upcoming events, Cochrane Job Fair is March twentieth at the Spray Lake Center, so that's coming up very close, very quickly. And then the incubator program, uh draft program strategy, launch of Smart Start and graduation of founders that we're anticipating later in the year. So uh really excited about all the activity that's happening in the Business Incubator and the positive impacts on. The Cochrane community that uh is resulting from it. We've definitely seen a lot of excitement and uh and action in that world. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Excellent. Uh thank you, team, for your excellent presentation. Let's see what questions we have from the bench. Councilor Flowers.
I'm just curious about the graduation of the founders. Is that the incubator founders?
Yes, that's uh correct. The Chair Council Flowers, we're talking about the uh the incubator founders. There's uh they're not all going to graduate necessarily at the same time. It depends on the pace of their business and what level of maturity and advancement and readiness they are. But uh anticipation is we'll start seeing some of the founders graduate from the program later this year. So we're probably looking Q three at the earliest, probably Q three, Q four.
So when they graduate, does that mean they have to move out or are they still staying there?
Well, I think the the ultimate objective of the Business Incubator Program is to help us develop sustainability uh and enable these businesses to get on their feet. Uh but we do want to make sure that we're ensuring that uh we provide them with the support that they need to go out on their own successfully and uh. Have that level of um resiliency once they get out there and operate on their own. Short answer is yes, hopefully. Uh but I mean, we we want to be careful and we want to make sure that they're going to survive.
Thank you.
Mayor Janon.
Yeah, thank you. I I I think the lack of questions are uh just an indicator of where we are in the evening. Um but I wanted to uh just say thank you. The amount of detail in your report, uh there's a lot of information in here. Uh and like other departments in uh our our organization, I just wanted to highlight uh. Um and Mr. Perrin, in your report, you you were talking about the ten thousand and I'm just picking one one point. But ten thousand inspections with the depleted um, you know, labor force and yet you push through. And I know it's, I'm picking on one thing and I I can say that to you, uh Nicole, in your area and. All across the the planning team, uh the amount of work that we're seeing with our growing community is, want to say thank you for. The efforts that you put in in the last year and you continue to to put on for for us here in Cochrane. So uh thank you. That's what I'm trying to say. That's my short answer.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Uh yeah, I don't actually have any questions. I just wanted to uh just identify that I really appreciated um. The lens that your team took in the report. I love the uh is anyone better off with all this work that we're doing and and explaining that. Um and also um just your commitment to identifying your service levels and how you're working to hit those service levels and 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 match them. I think that's a really important part of the report that I do appreciate is is your focus on your service levels. And um and yeah, and I applaud and appreciate the the doing more with less. But I think you've identified that we do need to have a conversation about how we make sure that you are adequately resourced. Um because we do want to make sure that we have uh really great people continuing to work with us and we don't burn you out too early. So um but yeah, thank you for the great report. Um I've always impressed uh with the presentation and the focus on service levels. So um and if you. Did you, I don't know if you had any other further words or key themes you wanted to hit on before?
No, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Excellent. So moving on to our last presentation of the evening, the twenty twenty-three Development Summary Report.
So I'm actually going to have this one, uh good evening, Deputy Mayor and Members of Council. I'm going to hand this off to Nicole Tomes, our uh Acting Manager of Planning Services. Uh Nicole is going to walk us through the twenty twenty-three Development Summary Report. Which has been a theme uh here at council for eight years, as I understand it. So uh we took a little bit of a different flavor on this one and I hope you enjoy it. I'll pass off, Nicole.
Good evening again. So yes, tonight I am presenting the twenty twenty-three Development Summary Report for the Plannings uh for. Community growth, um because we do incorporate a number of different uh metrics in order to get the data that we want at the end. So the the quote at the top of the report is that it was a growth year for Cochrane. Even while application activity was decreased compared to last year, and that's an overall number because they're mostly decreased with one. Uh which is uh increased, which you'll, which you'll notice is development permits. Um but an overview of what you'll find in this summary includes that Cochrane's population is increased by four percent. We had five hundred and ten new units, which was down from five hundred and forty last year. We still have thirteen point four to fifteen point five five four years of land use approved area. We have approximately seventeen to nineteen and a half years of neighborhood plan approved area. Our existing water licenses and treatment capacity enables approximately still eight point one and nine point two years of growth within the current current water limits. We have also eleven active growth neighborhoods and. Uh which absorbed a hundred and ninety eighty-seven development permit applications, nine hundred and seventy-seven subdivided parcels. Including nine hundred and ten of those being residential lots and six hundred and seventy-one certificates of compliance. So within the planning process, this report is reporting on the last six arrows. Area structure plans, neighborhood plans, land use bylaw applications and approvals, subdivisions, development permits. Of course, building permits. We then use this information to project future population, how much land supply is available, how much water license and treatment capacity is needed. Uh will be needed in future timeframes. It is, and it is also under our understanding that reporting on this since twenty eighteen has helped inform council's approach to tackling various. Growth issues and being able to better anticipate the coming challenges and opportunities for Cochrane. Getting into the neighborhood by neighborhood summary, this graph now shows uh a representation of what the table used to be in the previous reports. The blue portion of the bar, or sorry, the dark blue portion of the bar on the screen. Shows the amount of the neighborhood that is built, dwellings, people living in them. The light blue above it is unbuilt, but has some next level of approval. Uh at least either being land use and possibly also subdivision. The light tan color is projected dwelling amounts for lands that are outlined in a neighborhood plan. But do not have land use approval yet. And then on the far right in that bar, one bar that's outlined in black. Shows that of the eleven actively developing neighborhoods, we are about halfway built of what we have planned, halfway. Uh and and half left to build with only eleven point five percent that does not have land use granted within the approved planning areas. And given this amount of activity lately coming to your uh council agendas, this is also a reminder that this is only till the end of December twenty twenty-three. More is still coming at you. Moving on to development activity stats. These neighborhoods were the areas that applied for new subdivisions in twenty twenty-three. Heritage Hills, Heartland, Greystone, Fireside and South Bow Landing. Although you might notice that the total number of subdivision applications is down, the number of new lots continued to increase. In fact, twenty twenty-three was the most amount of new lots in the last five years alone. Development permit activity increased six point nine percent from twenty twenty-two to one hundred and eighty permits. Most notably, the forty-two of them were for non-residential uses, whether that be for new industrial, new commercial, institutional. Expansions, additions, including changes of use from residential to commercial or permitted to discretionary. As well as home occupations, which is infusing that appropriately sized and operated commercial into predominantly residential areas. And on the residential side, there were forty-one applications for suites, forty of which were approved and one is or or still being processed. One was canceled. There were nine applications for multi-unit dwelling residential development. Thirty-seven sign permits, including temporary portable signs, all the way to fascia freestanding and backlit. Seventy-three percent of permits had decisions within the statutory timeline of sixty days. The longest time for a single permit was two hundred and seventy-three days. While the shortest was the same day that the application came in the door, indicating that there is a broad range of complexity among the permits that we received last year. Which is also pretty par for the course also. Building permits, of course, you heard Safety Codes talk about building permits for new dwellings was down to five hundred and ten from five hundred and forty last year. In addition, there were five hundred and twenty-seven units approved through development permits for multifamily projects. Forty accessory suites were approved or applied for. And nine hundred and ten residential parcels applied for via subdivision applications. All equating to enabling hun- one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven new homes in twenty twenty-three. And this is a six point three percent increase from last year. Compliance certificates. So there, last year, there were six hundred and seventy-one applications for certificates of compliance. Which is a twenty percent decrease from last year. Certificates of compliance are most often a condition of sale for dwellings and thus one way of taking the temperature of the housing market outside of new building permits. Before twenty ten, there was only one year above five hundred applications and that was in nineteen ninety-eight. Since twenty ten, there have only been two years below five hundred, which were in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And by below, I I mean by barely just below five hundred at four hundred and eighty-one, four hundred and forty, or sorry, four hundred and ninety-nine. Um so last year at seven hundred sixty-one, we were closer to our ten-year average. Um so despite that twenty percent decrease, plenty healthy. As far as processing time, eighty percent of applications were completed within the target of ten days. Totally arbitrary target that we set for ourselves, um with only six applications out of the six hundred and seventy-one taking longer than thirty days. Now moving into the analysis portion of the presentation. So we use an estimate of two point six people per dwelling. And a standard vacancy rate to estimate the population increase based on new building permits for dwellings every year. The last federal census in twenty twenty-one had Cochrane at thirty-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine people. So we can use this number as a baseline. These projections put us at approximately thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine people for twenty twenty-three. We are doing a municipal census this year and we will have, and thus we will have a new baseline for next year. However, these are the numbers we are using for the next few slides. However, these are the numbers we are using for the next few slides. So from there, we use a high and, a low and a high average annual consumption of land or build-out rate to estimate land supply for different scenarios based on three different planning stages. The three planning stages I've outlined along the planning spectrum here, with area structure plans and neighborhood plans highlighted as three, land use as two, and subdivisions as one. So getting more and more detailed. So scenario one is future dwellings based on land that has subdivision in place. In this scenario, Cochrane has approximately three years of land supply readily available for building permits. And scenario two is future dwellings based on land that has been granted land use but needs both subdivision and building permits to get going. In this scenario, we have approximately thirteen to fifteen years of land supply. And this range aligns with the draft growth study projections, projection estimates for population that you saw in the fall. Coincidentally, and amazingly, but I love it. Scenario three is future dwellings based on land that has neighborhood plan or area structure plan approval, but still needs land use and subdivision and building permit to move forward. In this scenario, Cochrane has seventeen to nineteen-and-a-half years of land supply. This is the most complicated chart in the report. Separately, we can use the average build-out rates, the high and the low, or the annual land consumption rates to estimate how long it will take to get to a certain population. So we received confirmation last year in two thousand and twenty-three that our current water license and treatment capacity can support a population of forty-seven thousand people. Given our current population estimate of thirty-four, and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine, the difference is approximately twelve thousand, which equates to approximately four thousand six hundred and forty dwellings, new dwellings. Using our high and low build-out rates, this means that our, under our current water license, we can support eight-point-one to nine-point-two years more of growth. And I know I went through a lot of numbers and statistics this evening, but I'd like to leave you with this. Ultimately, based on historical trends, Cochrane is well-positioned to accommodate growth for three years with existing subdivisions, nine years with existing water capacity and treatment capacity, and fifteen years with existing land uses. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your thorough report. We're going to go to Council Reed to start off the questions.
I'm going to ask this really quick. I want to get done by ten o'clock. So a great presentation as usual. You didn't mention anything all about non-residential or commercial land use. And I'm wondering where we could get that information so council is informed about what we should be concerned about in terms of our future.
Sorry, Councilor, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, sorry.
You want to statistic about?
It's non-residential or commercial land use. I'm wondering what the land supply situation is with that. And can council get a report on what the projection is of what we have and where we think we will run out of land?
Through the chair, absolutely. You can get a report on that, yeah.
Sooner than later, or?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I believe that, well, you'll be. Sure. Mark wants to talk.
Hi, Councilor. Council Reed through the chair. We're more than happy to put together a report like that. If you'd like to see it, I'm confident we can bring it forward, maybe within QT. Is that an acceptable timeframe for you? We have the information. It's just a matter of pulling it together and putting it in a consumable, in a consumable method for you. With, in this report, we do highlight a few of the non-residential lots that were approved as well last year. I believe it was around forty-four lots that were approved for non-residential, but we can definitely pull that together and show you some historical trends to go along with it as well, whether council prefers to have that as a presentation or just a report that's distributed through our CAO. Both options.
Yeah, I guess, well, I think this report's brilliant in terms of what council needs to know about residential land. I think it's as equally important that we know about what non-residential or commercial property land is in terms of what your projections are and its usage. The other questions I had then, so this report would suggest that we have enough land or land supply, residential that is, as approved for sixteen years, and water for just over nine. Does the water licenses, does that cover what we have currently or what we anticipate we will have in the future? And I know it's all being worked on, but I can't remember if it's all solidified or not.
Through the chair, the numbers you see in the report is based on our existing water licenses as we currently have them, not taking into consideration anything new that's developed since December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah, the only addition I would say is I stepped out to talk to Mr. Bourget from Alberta Environment, and that was regarding our water license, which we anticipate very shortly. So the transfer is not included within this, so again, that will provide additional.
Years.
Yes.
Okay. And then one other question, if you can go back in your slide to the dwellings in growth communities?
This one?
No, it's the bar graph with the blue, light blue and brown. That one, yeah. So what was really surprising for me, and maybe not for other members of council, is if you look at Fireside, Heartland, and Heritage Hills, they were only half-built out, which was really surprising for me. And then Riviera and Sunset, those three are two-thirds built out. So it would suggest that, that, you know, I thought, I like, I literally thought Fireside and Heartland were almost done. And so I was kind of surprised to see that there's still quite a bit more growth to go in those through communities and that those other two, or either three are just two-thirds done. And so this would, the total would suggest that, and you referenced it half. So it looks like we've got about ten thousand lots still available, either in the unbuilt or dwellings needing additional approval category. So that would suggest that we have quite a supply on hand. Am I reading that right?
Yes, through the chair, you're absolutely correct. Some of these communities, like Riviera, accounts for multifamily sites that are undeveloped, so that took a lot of dwelling units in order to complete. But Fireside, Heritage Hills, Heartland, yeah, they have several more phases of development to go.
Yeah, wow, that's crazy. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Flowers.
Nicole, can you remind me where the summit is?
The summit is, on this graph, it's completely in tan because it has a neighborhood plan approved, but no land use granted.
Where is it located?
It's located just below the existing River Song that is on the plateau, so on the flat part. So it kind, it's, you might think of it actually as more in the South Bull Landing area, but it's just south of the existing River Heights.
Thank you. And you mentioned that we had more lots approved or added in two thousand and twenty-three, but yet the applications were decreased. Does that mean next year we're going to have a whole bunch of new houses?
Through the chair to answer your question, it totally depends on the market. But because there were less applications, that means that there were more lots per application. So, for example, last year there was, sorry, in two thousand and twenty-two, there was twenty-two applications, which only resulted in six hundred and thirty-seven residential lots. And last year, there was only fourteen applications, but it resulted in nine hundred and ten residential lots. So each application was heftier. That's a good way to think about it, yeah.
So four percent we grew last year. What did we predict? Do we remember?
Oh, do we have a prediction?
Yeah, so through the Chair Council Flowers, when you have a look through the report, you'll notice that we also include what our previous projections were, and we brought the development summary report last year. And we are seeing that land consumption is higher than what we anticipated last year. So we slightly update the numbers. The water consumption within the water license is less than we anticipated. But again, these are estimates, so I would caution, we try and take a very conservative approach on how we estimate them. But we are seeing that we're, development is occurring slightly faster than what we anticipated last year in last year's development summary report.
Great.
If that answers your question.
I'm somewhat amused by the opportunity to talk for longer than a minute. But, oh, sorry, Mr. Hyman, you have a point?
I will be very quick, but I just wanted to recognize the team for the evolution of this report. I think it's improved over a number of years. And obviously, I want to thank Councilor Nagle, who was the one who first requested this several years ago. And again, I think it's really something that we're quite proud of in the work. Nicole's been there from day one helping us on this. But I just think this has come a long way. And again, I think there's an example with the non-residential where we'll have an opportunity to include that in future reports as well, so.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you to the team. As has been highlighted, this is an amazing report. Really appreciate the detail you've provided there. I particularly enjoyed the Dwelling and Growth Community chart. I found that very helpful, as Council Reed had identified. I was also amused that there was no traditional planning pyramid. I missed that. But just overall, a great presentation. I appreciate it. And I did want to just note and thank you, Ms. Tomes, for taking on the Acting Manager of Planning Services. I know you've been with the team for a long time, so I really appreciate the opportunity that you've stepped up to fill the role for us right now. And again, yeah, great report. Thank you very much, team. And with that, I think we'll dismiss you, and I will declare adjourned.